Well, I guess we're all here. We should get started. I think it's seven o'clock. Good evening, everybody. This is the regular Tuesday night meeting of the Carlisle Select Board. Attending tonight, we have Kate Reed, Barney Arnold, Luke Askalillo, David Modell, and myself, Alan Lewis. That is our official roll call. We do have a quorum. Welcome to the other folks listening in tonight. Christina, Jeanie Gazenko, Mary Lynn Bone. Welcome. And of course, Tim Goddard is here and Jen, Jen Gibbons is here. So thank you all for attending this evening. I'll read the agenda. And again, as usual, we may go a little bit out of sequence if necessary. We do have a time. So actually, John's here. So I guess maybe it's not a problem, but so we had to wait for you to late o'clock. Chief, but that's good. All right. The agenda this evening, seven o'clock, we'll have community input. 7:05, the LEPC update. 7:15, the discussion vote on the new transfer station fees regarding construction debris. 7:30, the report on the planning board, MAPC Hazard Mitigation Presentation. Eight o'clock, again, Chief Fisher on request for the Public Safety Building Committee. 8:30, Select Board FinCom, the moderator will not be with us tonight. We'll be discussing the when we might be holding the annual meeting and the town election. Nine o'clock, the Town Administrators Report. 9:15 Liaison Reports. 9:25 Approval of Minutes and Warrants. And 9:30, if all goes well, we'll have adjournment. So let me start. Is there any community inputs this evening? I'm looking for any hands raised. I don't see any. So I guess we don't have any. David Modell.
Should we, after John does his LEPC report, should we just roll into his public safety? So we don't tie him up all evening?
That sounds like a wonderful idea.
John, I thought you had a commitment.
I was, I was going to have a commitment tonight. And it got postponed.
All right, very good.
I was, yeah, we're scheduled to coach a basketball game tonight, but because of the snow.
What? It's New Hampshire. They don't postpone things because of the snow. All right, we'll go right then to Chief Fisher and the LEPC report.
A good half of my kids are from Massachusetts. So yeah, so the LEPC, I guess I would describe it. I was trying to make some notes for tonight, and I I guess I would describe it as a sandwich. So I have good news. Some not so good news, and I'll end it with some good news. The really good news, I think, that's important for folks in Carlisle to know, is that the structure was delivered last week. And the fire department members did an extraordinary effort, as well as obviously help from you, Mr. Lewis. I get that structure up. I mean, our structure is up. We are ready to go. And it came out just as designed. Obviously, quite a few of us have been up there checking it out. And last night, the vaccine Subcommittee met. Very excited about this structure. Many of the members have been going up there this week to check it out. And we really think it's going to work well. So the good news is we have the structure, and we were ready to go for this Saturday for a senior clinic. Unfortunately, the state did not deliver the vaccine doses that we were kind of counting on. But I, several of us on the Vaccine Committee have done a poll, and we're not alone. There's a lot of places that did not get any, in brief. There's some that did get some, though. So we've really put the full court press on. You know, many people on this call reached out politically, Barney, Alan, and I know others have too. And, you know, really trying to find out. Our Board of Health members have reached out. So we're really trying to advocate for these doses to get here so that we can begin vaccinating. Of course, with with our seniors. So and then, but the other piece of the good news on the other end is our COA folks have done a tremendous job gathering information on folks. So we feel confident through the various sources available to us in Carlisle that our seniors, and actually, all of our residents, will be able to keep up with the availability of vaccine and where folks stand in line. So I wish it was better news. I wish we were just talking about the excitement we had for this Saturday. But for right now, it looks like we're thinking it's next week at the earliest. So but when that gets here, we're ready to go. And I guess the only other news is from the LEPC front. It's just the variety of other folks in town that have been keep on keeping on. The Carlisle Neighbor Group that's doing the shopping, for those that need to stay quarantined, need to stay safe. Our folks at the library that are just finding new and better ways to provide their services to residents of Carlisle. So from an LEPC front, we have that one piece of bad news. But I think overall, you know, Carlisle's in a pretty good spot. We had nine new cases this week. But that, according to Linda Fantasia, is, is keeping us below a level that is, for lack of a better word, egregious. So, you know, we don't like to see any, but there were nine new cases, and we're working forward. But I want to entertain questions or other thoughts, because there's other members of the committee that are on here that, of course, heard the LEPC news as well as the vaccine news last night. Is there anything I left off that folks would like to add?
No, I think that was, that was pretty good. Obviously, the, I mean, the big news was the structure and the fact that we didn't get the vaccine. And as you say, the, the pressure is on to try to get the state to make sure we get some this coming week. Hopefully, we will. And, and again, you know, we are a volunteer organization. It's, it's very upsetting when we have people ready to go, have given up their time, have scheduled it. And then they have to be told that it's canceled. And we don't want to do that too many weeks in a row, because that really disrupts the volunteer enthusiasm. But given this is Carlisle, I think that will, the enthusiasm will always be there, and we will, we will make this thing work. No question about it. And again, as Chief Fisher said, just a magnificent effort on behalf of the Fire Department, the EMTs, and the DPW, and getting that structures, those structures up in one day, one of which came with no directions on how to do it at all. They just did an absolutely fantastic job, and I want to publicly thank them. They did just a yeoman work. And great, great cooperation and leadership from Chief Saros and his officer team as well. Just a great thing. And thanks to Chief Fisher for getting us the structure and the, and the Jersey barriers to hold things down and that sort of thing. Just, just great cooperation among everybody, and we're very grateful for it. So thanks so much.
I'd like to throw out one more kudos. And you probably remember this, Alan, but Matt Svatek brought his own forklift over to unload those last week when we were unloading them. And, yeah, on his own time, came over there with that piece of equipment. So just a, just a typical Carlisle effort to a, to a big thing.
Yeah, absolutely. Well, it's a, it's a wonderful town to be part of, no question about it. So thanks to everybody. And bear with us as we try to make this whole thing work. Okay, let's go on to, let's go on to the eight o'clock session. Chief Fisher, request for Public Safety Building Committee.
Thank you very much. So I don't think it's a mystery to any, anyone that that our public safety buildings need to be replaced, more than just tender living care need to be replaced. But I think the responsible way to do this is, you know, we've had, I don't know. We've had some discussions over the years. There have been sets of plans. And I think the direction that we that Chief Saros and I dispatch, the direction we were provided by the Board, the Select Board, was to at least investigate fully or pursue combined public safety building. So I guess I respectfully ask that we have a committee charged to this so that we can meet in public. You know, I've mostly what Chief Saros and I have done is kind of scramble around with a couple of our friends in town and and look at some things informally, but we need to formalize. And I think that the time is now.
Thank you, Chief. Have you run this by Finance Committee? Because I, part of your request is to solicit bids. And there may be some costs associated with that. Do you, did you get any kind of a response from them?
I think that their thought was they're waiting for a direction from the Board. But the reason I brought it up, and Chief Saros brought it up, is the timing of this, because when we did the design for the Police Department, when they were doing the, going to try to do the upfitting two years ago, we got caught in the where, when the bids were due, and then when the work was done, conundrum. So that's why we had it on the, on the front burner this year. So that between now and town meeting, if this committee could organize behind some thoughts, we could at least, you know, respectfully bring something to town meeting to fund plans, which then could be funded in the next year. But then the, whatever firms met those bids, they would have to honor those bids. And then the design work or the research work, we think it's probably both, will get done in the next year so that we have plans. And then we would do the same thing when we were, if we were ever looking for improvements or a different structure.
And obviously, I mean, this would be part of one of the committee's charges as well, but is there any preliminary, has there been any preliminary thought about where such a building might be located?
I think it's one of the things that the committee is charged with. We're looking at, we're really looking at three big things. So the answer to that is no, not yet.
Okay, thank you. Any discussion of this from the Select Board?
So Chief, what, what your thought is, or sort of thinking about the schedule on this, you're thinking that we would review this and then come back at a future Select Board meeting to determine whether or not we would set up a, a working group? Is that the idea? And then from there, you're thinking if there is a working group set up that they would figure out a, something, a warrant article for this town meeting to solicit, to authorize funds to solicit a to, to hire a firm to produce some, I mean, go through the bidding process, but then have a firm hired that would then draw up some sort of preliminary plans. Is that, am I getting that right?
Yeah, I, I mean, I would like to see them do both things, you know, what, what we need as well as design what we need. And this would be a committee, not a, not a working group. This would be, you know, we'd hold our meetings in public. You know, it's, it's been more, you know, Carlisle's filled with so many professional folks. So it's, it's more of a bit like, all right, you know, John calling a friend in Carlisle who's an architect, hey, what do you think of this? And, you know, relying on the people we always rely on, the David Freedens of the world, Bill Rizzo, Christine Lear, you know, Brian and I, and Matt Svatek. It's really just been us kind of bouncing ideas and calling our friends to see, you know, what do we think? But we need to formalize. So I'd like that group to be charged with that so that we can it'll, it'll help move forward. We've got to be, we're at the spot where, you know, this transparency is going to help us in the effort to get this through.
Well, John, of course, it's going to be transparent. I mean, there's no choice. This is a transparent process. So.
I guess it's more than just transparency. I guess it's more letting people know what we're thinking, and then, and, you know, an opportunity for, for give and takes at meetings and just so that we know we're on the right course.
Honestly, all that, of course, we're going to do all that. I'm more concerned, I'm concerned, and we raised it last time. I want, I've said it, I said, it was reported in the paper, I'm going to say it again. Either we decide the master plan is going to guide us, or we ditch the master plan, right? And we just go our own way. If it's the former, we talked to Barney about maybe, you know, getting something from them by, you know, June, so we can think about it. Or we're just going to move out. But, you know, we spent an awful lot of energy planning all these things. This is a huge capital expense for the, for the town. And we don't just go into it willy nilly. I mean, we should, we recognize that we need to do something about public safety. But where it is, how much it is, whether the town can afford it, and, you know, those are big chunk issues that just shouldn't be like, okay, I want this guy and this guy and this guy in the committee. I mean, we've got to have a process that's, you know, engaging with FinCom at a high level about how much debt we're going to incur in this environment, and whether we're ready to take on a capital project, and whether we even have a spot for it. And then, if that's all okay, then I think we should form a committee. And we should have, you know, people who are in the building trades, not just you guys, and really, you know, do it that way. It just doesn't seem, it seems like we're ahead of our skis. I don't deny that we need it. I don't like the way the process is rolling.
Yeah, I, I guess my feeling is there's nothing wrong with a parallel process. You know, we did this for the community center. You know, we, we went out, we talked about location, we actually had a preliminary design constructed that wasn't necessarily a go ahead to build it. But at least we knew what we were talking about when we go forward. And I should also say, I am in conversations with the, with the Master Planning Committee, John Ballantyne, to talk about where they are in their schedule. And Barney, I know there's been, I saw several emails in the last day or two about that. And there's no question, they, they feel they're going to be ready with, with a plan by town meeting time. But I think.
Sorry, not town meeting this year.
Oh, okay. I thought they were talking about that. Okay.
No, no, no. The idea is, well, the master plan would be, you know, sort of the initial plan would come out maybe end of the summer, early fall, and then there'd be a lot of, you know, engagement with people in town, and then a a final plan written by the end of the year with the idea that spring of 2022, that town meeting would, would be discussing it and voting on it.
Well, I guess, okay, now that's fine. But I think I'm, I'm, my own feeling is there's, there's an argument to be made for a parallel process. So if, if the decision is made, you know, and by the way, this is also going on with looking at our debt capacity with the, with the, with the Treasurer and Finance Group. But to look at, you know, to, to come up with some kind of a conceptual design that would at least tell us what potential costs might be, because one of the things I want the, the Master Planning Committee to do is not only talk about what the town might like to have, but whether or not it's something we can do. That is, if it's affordable, what, what, you know, what are the plans for actually implementing whatever their master plan is? And so I'm, my own feeling is, there is, there is, I think justification for going ahead with, with some planning for a public safety building. Along, while, while the, not saying that it's not part of the master plan, it would still be part of the master plan. But at least it would be a group, a subgroup, specialized group, looking at how that, what it might look like if they decide to go forward with it.
Yeah, also just say, sorry, let me just add one more thing about the master plan. So I think both Jack Trost and Stacy Lennon, the, the co-chairs are prepared to come to the next Select Board meeting or the first one in March. So we, you know, I reached out to them after our conversation two weeks ago, because we had indicated we wanted to have them come. So they're prepared to do that when we want them.
I just wanted to kind of add to what you were saying, Alan. You know, I, I, I think it actually needs to run in a parallel process or a parallel track, just because of the enormity of it, right? We, we've been kicking it around for years because we don't know what it's going to cost. We don't know what our needs are. We don't know any of that. And, you know, and if, if I'm reading this charge right, it seems like that's what this initial piece is going to be, right? And then once it, you know, once it goes on to the, to the solicitation piece, then my guess is that the, the committee would probably change a bit, right? And I think, you know, I think that's one thing that we have to start considering more as a select board, kind of as these, you know, committees move on in time, you know, replacing some of the members with more qualified people during those phases. You know, we have a lot of folks that, very qualified, but, you know, but they might not be the right person moving on. But, but it seems to me like this just gets us to a point where, you know, we're going to figure out needs, we're going to figure out costs. You know, at least a ballpark of costs. You know, and we can start figuring out, you know, what size parcel we need, that sort of thing. And, and, you know, I think that's critical, because if we get to, you know, too late down the road, right? And we need to start doing this after, you know, the master planning process is done, you know, we're going to add six, eight months on to it, right? So, you know, and I think, you know, all the, all the points that you bring up, Dave, with, you know, Finance Committee and, and, you know, I mean, they're all critically important, right? And, you know, we also have to kind of factor in, you know, there's a Highland Committee, and, and, you know, they have plans that are in probably the $3 million range. You know, so while that's, you know, that's kind of running in a parallel track too. So, you know, I just, I think in order to really keep all of this running and moving, you know, setting up this initial committee makes a lot of sense.
But, I mean, Luke, I I'm really struggling with this, because the biggest, at the highest level of what we have to do strategically at the town is really decide, you know, how much debt we can, what is our debt capacity in the next few years, right? So that's, that's been recognized by Alan and by the, by Jim Dar, and, you know, and in any of the meetings I've been in that revolve around air conditioning at the school, and who knows what. We always come back to that. So that's got to frame kind of the boundary conditions. Now, into that, then go, as you mentioned, Luke, the competing requests of, you know, Highland and MFC has a whole bunch of, a whole bunch of things. It was reported, you know, I mean, Kate indicated that last time. There's a million, several million dollars of things going on there. And then, you know, every, every single committee we touch, School Committee, Board of Health, you know, they all come up with a list of requests. So, and I personally feel that the public safety building is the right thing, but that doesn't matter. I think what matters is kind of a rank ordering. And I really worry that we get too far down the track. And we do this a lot, you know, we get an architectural firm, and they spec it, and we start going down there, and we give them 25K to do this and that, and then we're sort of committed on that road, you know, I mean, there is a reasonable alternative that says, fix the old police building and fix the old fire station. I don't like it, but that might in the end be the cheapest thing. And we may come out of the committee and say, you know what, in this COVID world, in this little town, you know, I've said it before, right? The New England mantra. I don't remember all of it, but it's like, fix it up, use it up, wear it out, or do without. You know, it's like this thing where you just do what you do with what you have. And so I very much worry in a parallel process that we get sort of committed on a path before we even know whether that path is really something. I absolutely feel like we should get an early read from the priorities of the master plan and commit ourselves as a board this summer with FinCom, or, you know, I'd say post-town meeting, to really establish what our parameters are in this town for spend. Because once we go down one track, we absolutely shut off all these other tracks. Highland, you can just throw it away, just tear it down, because once we do this, that ain't going to be possible. And I, and maybe that's the right thing, but I don't think from a process standpoint, we should be going at it the way we're going at it.
Wouldn't it be helpful to the Master Planning Committee to have some idea of what the magnitude of such a project would be?
Honestly, Alan, we're not the only town, we could check comps. I bet in a few hours, we would give you a reasonable fidelity estimate without any study. We know what these buildings cost.
We're not doing that. We need to have some group to do that, and this committee could do that.
We could do that. I mean, but that's a, that's a comp study that takes, you know, a few hours. I mean, it's not a whole committee. We know what the public safety building needs, and we know other towns that need it.
I don't.
I bet you we do. I bet you Tim can get that done. I bet I could get that done if I have. And Kate, I'd like to hear from you on this.
Can I say what I really think? I'm tired.
Sugarcoat it the way I do, please.
Well, you know, I believe in doing things right and not doing them. I hate the Yankee way of, you know, penny wise and pound foolish. I'd rather do things right and do them right the first time and not have to do it over again, as we're having to do in all of our buildings now. So so I would like to be assured before we embark on a new project that we can do this right. So that's my first thing. And then my second thing, of course, you know, I harp on all the time, is I would like to get our other buildings as well to, you know, the ones that we won't be redoing or rebuilding. I'd like to have enough money to at least get them righter than they are now. So, so I guess I'm, you know, I kind of agree with everybody here, but I think we need to know how much money can we spend? Some things, you know, and then some things will, like the Community Center, first of all, the study was not done by the town, that was done by private funding. As I recall, because the town did not want to fund that study. So I assume that that's probably right out that, you know, it's going to be a victim of, of, you know, our money woes. So I don't know. And I, and I suppose you can, and I also want to address needs, health, safety, welfare of our, you know, of our employees and our townspeople and needs before once.
Further discussion?
Yeah, just one last quick thing. You know, and it's our responsibility to not let something get too far down the pike, right? That it, that it grows a set of legs and runs on its own, right? If, if we don't think it's right, then we stop it. I mean, that's our responsibility, and it's FinCom's responsibility. So, you know, I mean, you know, we, we can't always be the nice guys, right? So if, if at the end of the day, you know, you know, this, this group comes up with a plan, and it's $45 million, and it's just not feasible, we, we say no, and it doesn't matter. You know, we have to stand up at town meeting and say, you know, or, or we don't even put the warrant on, right? But, you know, it's our responsibility to say, no, this isn't a financially viable thing for the town. But, but, you know, I think right now where we stand, we just, we don't really know. You know, so.
You know, Luke, what, what, I'm not against that, but what if we ran the exercise with, you know, Kim and the Finance Committee and said, you know, what's the appetite for an additional capital project, right? And, and let's say it's 10 million, I'll just pick a number. And we go to whatever, you know, then we go to some architectural firm or whatever, we say, what can we build for 10 million? Tell us what we can build for 10 million. Because if we give them an open slate, it's going to be a big project. And we just, you know.
Right, but I'm not, I'm not proposing we, we hire architects at this point. What I'm saying is we, we get a group together to, I mean, before you go to architects at all, you need a list of what your requirements are. At the very least, this group could get together and say, here's our concept. Here's what, here's the, you know, the, the back of an envelope, mag, the magnitude of what a project might look like. And we can then look at that and perhaps go from there, and, but feed that to the Master Planning Committee as well, while they're trying to make decisions about what the priorities are.
Okay, you know, I mean, that's fine. I think that's fine. But that's not a, that's nothing that's actionable at town meeting this year.
No, no, I'm not proposing it. I'm not proposing it is. And I, and I think that's probably not feasible in any, even if you send it to an architectural firm, you're not going to get it by town meeting. But it's the kind of thing, I really think we need to get started on this. And I think that the idea is reasonable to begin to put together a group to talk about what such a project might look like in terms of magnitude, in terms of what the real requirements are. And it may well be And it may well be that when Kim and the, and the finance folks come in and say, here's our, here's our debt capacity. Here's the kind of things we can talk about. Again, that goes to the master planning committee because they're going to have to come up with recommendations on the kinds of things, the priorities of the town. Uh, that's their charge to, uh, move forward. But I think unless we get started on this, we're going to be another year down the pike before anything happens at all.
Okay, fair enough. So two comments. One is, I accept, I, you know, I agree with that. And the committee though needs to be, besides the, you know, what, what Chief Fisher, uh, recommended is on the need side, which is fair because you have to spec the needs, but we must have some representation on that committee about who's experienced in the building trade. You know, I don't know if that's Doug Stevens or any number of developers we know, but somebody who really understands what construction, what those needs mean in terms of cost.
I, I think that's fine. And again, the, the suggestions that have been forth are good ones, but I think we can, we can, you know, discuss and get, put a, put a committee together that meets those requirements, including the member of two of the select board, uh, to guide the process and see, no, we don't. No, I'm not saying that, but, but we need, we need a liaison for sure. Uh, but I would say, I mean, I, my own feeling is let's, let's move forward. We will, uh, propose a committee, we'll run it by the chiefs, uh, and, uh, you know, come to consensus on this. And at least, you know, we're not spending any money at this point, uh, but we'll get a lot of information, I think. We'll, we'll get out a set of requirements. We'll know what we're talking about a little better. And this can be done in process with the master planning process and we'll perhaps gain several months on, on making decisions.
So let's turn, let's turn back to master planning. You know, Barney and master planning, besides, um, the, uh, you know, prioritization, I guess, that at least my observation from the kitchen table conversations was about, you know, priorities and trade offs. Is master planning looking at sort of the box of finance, like how much scarce resource allocation? Or it's sort of more prioritization and understanding that somebody else will set, you know, if you prioritize everything, then, you know, somebody else will set the total amount and you'll stop when you fill that bucket?
I think the answer is kind of some both. But I'll, I'll take a crack at giving a response and, um, that's a good question to also bring up when we have Jack and Stacy, um, come talk to us. The sort of broad idea, or the broad goal is to use the, the process of developing a master plan to identify some possible scenarios about town growth or not. And what the, what the financial ramifications of those are, the financial parameters, I guess is a better way to say it. Looking at, um, you know, the taxes that are currently being paid by residents. What is the impact on that depending on what, uh, you know, actions are taken, what, what projects are taken on? But also assessing through not just a survey, but a lot of, uh, engagement of people in town. You know, we want to give them, uh, enough specifics that they can really indicate what the trade, what trade offs they are willing to make for what, um, results. So, um, I would say that the master plan is not going to be, I, I think it's great, it would be great actually to have some, uh, more detail of, of what, um, a, a combined public safety structure would potentially cost, uh, because I think that's got to factor in, um, with, with all the other, uh, financial questions. But it is not going to, the master plan is not going to be making a, setting a priority for, is not going to be, um, I mean, ultimately it's going to be the finance committee and really eventually the select board, right? That has to determine what, what can we, uh, sustain financially and what kind of debt we're willing to take on? And what's the impact going to be on residents? So I, I think it's a, you know, it's the master plan can do a lot of legwork on identifying what people are, want to see happen and what they are willing to pay or give up. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I, yeah, let me say it a different way and see if this is right. So it would be great, it would be great if the master plan, if the result of, you know, these conversations and debates produced essentially a rank ordering of priorities for people in terms of where, you know, public safety, community center, open space preservation, lower ta, you know, taxes, just some kind of metric. And then separately, I guess, and this is idealized maybe that I'm willing, you know, the majority consensus is I'm willing to see, you know, reasonable tax increases in pursuit of, you know, more capital infrastructure or some, if, if you sharpen a point, now that we know what the debate is about. I mean, we've got, this is a bigger picture than, you know, the public safety building, but we've got operational growth, like operational expense growth that, you know, we were just, I was just in a meeting with, with a school committee yesterday and, and they're wrestling with, you know, as we talked about last time, like a high single digit increase, right? So that's just an operational increase. That has nothing to do with air conditioning the schools or whatever, right? So there's that growth of the process as we are a 21st century town in a, you know, high service state. I mean, that's who we are, right? So there's this just general growth of, of the, the running of the town. And then there's these capital projects and I'm just struggling with, this is maybe the reason why I sound so kind of adversarial in this. I'm really struggling with how you combine all that. And then you have to overlay affordability and come up with some balancing act about what, what is really important and what we're prepared to sacrifice to get there. And that's why I said, and I will say again, that if we could get, and this is a good discussion maybe for, you know, master plan next time, but if we could get kind of the sense, or we could guide the master planning committee to give us some fence posts in, you know, June, I don't know, sometime. And that we would commit with finance committee to take that early data. It's not definitive, but it's early data and, and spend the summers, a couple of sessions in the summer to really try to work that into a model, you know, just a framework where we understand what, what that's telling us. And then we can say, and I agree, you know, I agree with the parallel process from the definition standpoint. If at the end of all that, you know, a, a whatever, high single digit millions capital facility is injected into that matrix, what does it force out and what is our appetite for simply increasing, you know, either debt load or taxes or both, you know, we gotta get some control of that. And I just, I don't feel like we have it right now.
Yeah.
So can master plan help with that and not by next town meeting? I mean, by, you know, by summertime.
Right. Right.
It's a question, Barney.
Well, I'm, you know, I'm sitting here thinking of all the things that we are attempting to do between now and June. And I, I think there is the possibility, I can't give you a, uh, a percentage possibility that we will have some, a more, that we will have, you know, some enough data, enough feedback that we can, um, be reasonably comfortable about sort of what people in town are, are, you know, what, what they, what the priorities are. But our, our goal, our, our timeline right now has us doing a reasonable amount of community outreach and engagement from April, through April and May with the tentative goal of having by early June, having some results, some, some, you know, preliminary guidance. So that's our.
I mean, that, that sounds promising. I, I would, so again, you know, in the terms of mess, I would encourage, as I always say, don't let perfect be the enemy of the good.
Right, no, I hear you.
Some feedback, let's just say early summer, you know, and, and that we would take on, I mean, because John and Brian, you know, they, they need an answer. They need to make decisions and we need to make decisions about how much to Band-Aid the old buildings. And, you know, is it a go? I mean, if I were in John's shoes, you know, I'd say, well, just tell me, right? Is there a chance we're going to build a building? Are we going to have to Band-Aid the old one? Are we going to commit 2 million to fix the old one? I mean, I can't live with what I got, you know? So I get it. And, and I, I agree, I guess, at the end that we should have the working group parameterized in parallel, as Alan says. And, but I really, really would like to put some more process control on the whole thing. This happens to be the lead project maybe in a whole bunch of things, but.
There's a lot of stuff. Right, right.
I will say, we are, uh, communication between the select board and the master planning committee is going to step up a bit here to try to get to get on the same page about where we think we ought to be going and what the timelines ought to be.
Yep, okay, thank you.
All right, well, let me, we, you go ahead, Kate.
Well, I just think that, uh, if we can't leave the planning board out of that. I think we have to have the planning board involved as well since the master plan committee is a planning boards committee. So whenever we do, do that, I think we need to know if the planning board is also on the same page.
Yep, I agree.
Yeah.
All right, well, then we will go forward with, we'll put together a committee, you know, uh, liaison with, uh, the chiefs and, and whoever else would like to be a part, part of that process from the select board. And we will get a committee put together, which can start to, uh, put some of those data in place and we get some idea where we are.
Maybe Luke and I could be that you're, you're, because we're both the liaisons to the.
Sounds good to me. It's Luke.
Safety.
Yeah, for that, Luke, all right, outstanding. All righty, good. Thank you all and thank you chiefs. We will move forward. Thank you. All right, uh, I would like to, Barney, if you don't mind, I would like to bring the MAPC report in prior to the transfer station just because we have some people who aren't, everybody else here is on the, uh, select board anyway for the rest of the agenda. But, uh, Mr. Pillsbury is here from MAPC, maybe we can ask him to go next. If that's okay with everybody. All righty, Mr. Pillsbury, uh, welcome.
Thank you very much and thank you to the board for inviting me to join you tonight. And, uh, with the few witches of snow out there, I'm even more than some of the other members welcome to have a Zoom meeting because I would have to be driving from Brookline, Mass. If it were an in-person meeting. Uh, not that I don't enjoy coming out to Carlisle, I've been out to Great Brooks, uh, skiing in the past and it's a lovely town. Uh, so tonight, um, I'm, I'm going to give you an overview of two parallel projects the town is working on together that MAPC is, is helping you put together. And, um, I do have a PowerPoint and so I don't know, Mr. Goddard, can you turn that over? Do you want to either run that or turn it over to me to show that?
You should be able to share your presentation.
Right, let me see if I can find it right now then. Yes. Share this and just put it into slideshow mode.
There you go.
Okay, and slide came very good and put this away. Very good. So everyone recognizes, I hope, where we are here and, um, so I'm going to jump in. The town is working on two very similar projects together, which is a really smart idea. And we'll talk about what each of them, but most of the presentation tonight will be on the hazard mitigation plan. The reason I say they're both very similar because the topics involved to do with various kinds of natural hazards that could affect the town. Uh, the difference between the two programs is the hazard mitigation plan, which is a FEMA, comes out of FEMA at the federal level and MEMA at the state level, is a project that largely looks at assessing your hazards based on the historic evidence. At what floods and hurricanes have you had over the past decades, et cetera? And, you know, given an idea of what your risks and vulnerabilities are based on the empirical evidence of what you've actually experienced in this part of the world. Uh, the municipal vulnerability preparedness project, which is a program of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, is, is looking at some of those very same hazards, but through a different lens, through a lens of looking at what are, how in the future, due to climate change, might some of these hazards be different? Uh, unfortunately, in many cases, more hazardous, more frequent, et cetera. And by looking at these together, it's a very efficient way of getting an overall sense of what the risks and vulnerabilities the town faces are and then what actions you can take as a town over time, both short term and long term, to increase your community resilience. So it was kind of a good happenstance that the town needed to do these two projects together and that the state was willing to give you a grant that funds working on these two together. There's only a handful of other towns that I know of in our region that have had the opportunity to put these two programs together. So many towns have done hazard mitigation plans separately and or MVP project separately. And this is a good opportunity to do them both. Uh, just a few mentions of that MVP municipal vulnerability preparedness, which is why they use an acronym because it's, it's a mouthful. Uh, again, it is a Commonwealth of Massachusetts program run through the Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs. Uh, and it's designed to give communities an opportunity to assess what are the extreme weather and natural climate events that you are subject to, what are the hazards? To identify what some of your future vulnerabilities and strengths are so that you can maybe, uh, you know, increase your strengths and work on some of those vulnerabilities. Uh, and then most importantly, to develop and prioritize actions that communities can take uh, and to identify opportunities to take those actions in the future. So that's the gist of the MVP program. And in this slide, it drills down just a little more detail how that process is structured. First of all, um, the, the major categories of climate risks that affect a particular community are focused on. Uh, initially, we, we think this likely to be things like inland flooding, extreme heat, uh, winter storms and drought. Uh, if you were a coastal community, obviously you'd have a whole plethora of other issues that that's one thing you don't have to deal with. Uh, and then those issues are looked at through the length, through the lens of what are the strengths and the weaknesses that your community has in several different sectors in terms of your infrastructure. And interestingly, we just followed a very long discussion about a key part of your infrastructure, uh, your environment, your environmental resources, say your rivers, your watersheds, your wetlands, your forests, et cetera. Uh, and your social setting, uh, you know, other vulnerable populations. We just talked a little bit earlier about the, the elderly in respect to the COVID. And some of these heat and other climate effects don't affect everyone equally. And there are some parts of your population that may be more rollover to some of them. So the process is designed to be able to get down to that level of detail and look at what are the particulars in your community along these lines? And the whole thing is structured around a, an MVP workshop, uh, which the, the core team, uh, has, uh, laid out, begin to lay some plans out for holding in late March. And then following that, a public listening session, uh, which will come back to the full community and report back on some of the findings of the workshop. So that's the overall structure of the MVP project. Um, and before I move on, I'll, I will go into the hazard mitigation plan, but maybe I'll pause right there. Is there any questions anyone would like to, uh, to ask about the MVP part of this? And since I have my screen up, I can't see, so I would just say, go ahead and ask if you have a question. Okay, then hearing that, I will head proceed. What I, this is the part of the program that I really wanted to spend more detail on tonight, which is the hazard mitigation program. So this is, as I mentioned, a federal program under FEMA, which is the, is the parallel state agency, mass emergency management administers in this, this federal program in our state in partnership with DCR. Uh, and MAPC, uh, has been brought in by the town as a number of your other neighboring towns have done with us to bring you in to help put these plans together. Uh, so what do we mean by hazard mitigation plan? Well, there was an act passed at the federal level back in the year 2000 called the Federal Disaster Mitigation Act. And all of this flows from that act. Uh, it requires towns across the whole country to adopt a hazard mitigation plan at the local level in order to be eligible for FEMA mitigation grants and FEMA mitigation grants can pay for actual projects on the ground, drainage improvements and that sort of thing, flood prevention measures. So this plan actually is updating a plan that you have already in place. You, you did one of these plans, in fact, MAPC helped you put your previous plan together. And this plan will, they, these plans need to be updated on a regular basis. So by doing this updating of your plan, you will get back into the place of being eligible FEMA grants again. And so mitigating natural hazards is what this plan is about. And FEMA, as you well know, has a whole plethora of different kinds of plans. So it's important to maybe just distinguish this. It's actually not an emergency response plan. You have those kind of plans in place already. You have a comprehensive emergency management plan and other sorts of things, an LEPC. This is about looking before disaster strikes and figuring out what you can do to make the town more resilient and and have less of a negative impact. And it's about natural hazards, not other kinds of hazards. For instance, it's not a homeland security, terrorism, it's not about chemical, nuclear, human caused, technical hazards. It's about every kind of natural hazard, however, multiple categories. And in our corner of the world, flooding is the most common ubiquitous category of hazard, but we also have, and it seems increasingly with climate change, more in the way of high winds due to hurricanes, nor'easters, tornadoes, winter storms. I mean, you know, Mother Nature never fails to show up on the doorstep when I'm actually giving one of these presentations. Although fortunately, it wasn't a big one tonight. Brush fires, that sort of thing, in in forest fires areas, and you have a lot of open, obviously, in Carlisle, particularly more than other towns in the region, a lot of open and forested land. Also, geologic hazards, earthquakes, landslides, extreme temperatures, both hot and cold and drought. Now, it's worth noting that some of these hazards are much more likely to happen in Carlisle, and some of them are very unlikely to happen. Like, I don't think, you know, earthquakes and landslides are a very major category or a major but the FEMA process wants all of these to be at least looked at. And you can sort of prioritize what's really important or what really you may be subjected. The idea behind FEMA is putting this program together and getting towns and cities across the whole country to adopt these plans is they're trying to interrupt this cycle that they've seen again and again across the country in areas that are prone to disaster, of having a disaster, a lot of damage, paying through the insurance program and federal funds to do some rebuilding, and then having another disaster and then rebuilding again, and on and on it goes in some places. Now, Carlisle was fortunate not to have a lot of this very extreme repetitive loss. Some of the coastal communities have a lot more of this. But the idea is still that we want to, you know, do what we can to reduce how much damage a community will be subject to. So what do we mean by hazard mitigation? And to the right of this photo is sort of a definition that MEMA often uses, which is to reduce or prevent loss of life, injuries and property damage by using long-term strategies before a disaster happens. And that's, sometimes they use the term for this pre-disaster mitigation, which, you know, that idea of pre-disaster, I always liked that term, because it makes it feel like you you have a sense that that sword is hanging over you, that disaster is about to happen. Well, it may or may not. And that's the thing, you never know when it will happen and how severe it will be. So the best thing you can be doing is preparing as well as you can. So we ask these two questions below when we engage in this kind of planning. What preventative actions are being taken now to reduce future risk? Because you've taken, you are, you as a community are taking many actions already. You've lived with all of these kinds of hazards for a long time, and it's not as if you're not doing anything. There's lots in place already. Floodplain overlay management, you know, drainage improvements, things are going on and have been going on. So we actually begin by taking stock on what's the baseline of what you have in place now for hazard mitigation? And from there, we can identify are there gaps, are there weaknesses, are there things that can be approved? We ask this important question at the end here, what additional actions can be taken in the future to reduce the vulnerability and increase the town's resilience? So that's the the gist of what the plan is about. Hazard mitigation is really not one thing. It's a kind of an umbrella term under which different kinds of actions can be taken, some of which are things, you know, more preventative actions, and some of which are property protection, like, for instance, elevating houses and floodplains, elevating utilities are in in basements subjected to flooding frequently. Also, things like public education, because a lot of what can be done, people can, if with better knowledge and warning, can do on their own properties, whether it's residences or small businesses, institutions, natural resources protection, you know, letting Mother Nature do the maximum we can to help protect us, restoring and saving, you know, the the flood absorption capacity of our wetlands and floodplains, et cetera, which again is something that Carlisle historically has done a great job with. And then sometimes, when you really still have a problem that all of those measures can't really help you enough with, you do need infrastructure type projects, structural projects, it might be drainage improvements, upgraded culverts, work on dams, levees, et cetera. And then finally, emergency services. And again, playing on on the conversation you just had, the one function in town that you do not want to see taken out by a natural disaster is the capability of your emergency services, because then they can't help everybody else in town who's being affected. So you want to make sure that they're very resilient and they can, that the facilities and and procedures and the policies that they have in place are going to enable them to, as much as possible, be continued to be functional themselves in the midst of any kind of hazard, whether it's a flood, a winter storm, et cetera. I'll maybe I'll take a quick pause again to see if anybody has any questions, because I, since with the screen up, I can't really see everyone, but if not, then I will ahead. So how is this plan being developed? The first of all, I really want to take note of the fact that the town has developed what we call a core team, which has representatives of multiple town departments. I want to thank Madeline Blake, who I think has been on this meeting tonight, for helping to guide that group. And it has members from all of your major departments and and boards. And I am from MAPC, we're here to help you actually pull the information together, do the research and and actually draft the plans according to the way FEMA prescribed. And it's a very prescriptive set of regulations that FEMA has. How you do these plans is not as, it's not as open to interpretation as maybe doing a master plan or an open space plan. There's literally several pages in the Federal Code of Federal Regulations, CFR XYZ, I don't remember the quote right now, that says exactly how you have to do these planes and what needs to be into them. So we're part of our job at MAPC is kind of learning to understand what FEMA requires and translating all that FEMA ease into English and work with the community to actually develop the information locally that can then be fed into the plan in the format that FEMA requires for it. In the process of doing this, this, these two projects, again, this hazard mitigation plan, again, reminding you in concert with the MVP state program, the town will host a community resilience building workshop, that's for the MVP program, and following that, a listening session, and host two hazard mitigation public meetings, of which this is the first. The first meeting is intended to happen during the, during the middle of the process, while you're in the process of putting the plan together. The second one will come, we will revisit this at the point when the plan is drafted and put together, but before it's submitted to FEMA for the board and for the broader community to have an opportunity to understand what's in the plan, comment on it and make sure that it looks complete. This is kind of a roadmap going in clockwise around what the major steps in the process are. And we are on that red step number four right now. So we've made some, the core team has has worked with us and had a couple of meetings already, and it's been very helpful. We've already done a lot of the heavy lifting and pulling a lot of the information together. That's the the basis of the plan, looking at profiling and mapping critical facilities, risks, et cetera. The next steps to come will begin to look at what the existing mitigation measures are and and develop a package of recommendations that will be the heart of the plan, and then bring it back for a second public meeting before submitting it to FEMA. So that we're we're into the middle of the process here and aiming to wrap everything up by by June 30. Just a sample of a couple of the things that go into the plan in terms of the content for doing like such things as the hazard profile and the mapping. We begin by drawing on what data we can from federal sources like US Geological Survey, National Weather Service, and that sort of thing on on resources like this is a chart here of the the flood levels and the flow levels nearby in the in the Asa Bette River, you see. We'll pull these kinds of information together to give a big picture. But then we want to really drill down into a finer grained picture of what's going on locally in Carlisle. And that's where that core team with their local knowledge really comes in. So we really pick their brains and draw upon the local core team members to look to help give us information about the different categories of hazards and how they particularly and where in town you may have hazard spots that are more affected than others. This is an example of what the the core team has helped us develop a list of areas that are subjected locally within Carlisle to mostly the flooding and some snow and ice cases. So and these are all mapped on the, I know you're not going to see it in detail at this scale, but if you could see this map at a larger scale, all of these sites are mapped along with overlays of where are the FEMA floodplains and that sort of thing, to begin to get a picture of the geographic district distribution of where some of the hazard areas of concern are within the community. We also look at other categories. And flooding is really one of the biggest and most ubiquitous, as I said, but we look at all the categories. We pull up information about the extreme heat and cold, about earthquake hazards, of which you're in a moderately low area here, about drought, which, of course, we have had drought in just 2016, one of the larger droughts in a few decades, and just last year, 2019, a moderate drought. So, you know, I would, before 2016, I would have said, yeah, we can get droughts once in a while, but it's been years since we've had one. Well, you just never know. And now we've had two of them in just the last four years. So it seems to be that many of the climate projections are that we may actually see droughts more frequently, and that our evidence lately seems to be bearing that out. And then extreme precipitation, which is also something we're seeing more of, having events where more rain occurs in a short period of time, and that's the kind of thing that really can overwhelm local drainage systems, go beyond what they were designed for, et cetera. And then critical facilities. So throughout the community, lots of different facilities are put down into this inventory and mapped also on that same map. And you see here a different kinds of facilities that are all grouped together under the broad group rubric of critical. It includes all the disaster response sites, such as police and fire and, you know, public works where you might have equipment that would help you in a response. But it also lists sites that might require assistance, such as elderly housing and that sort of thing, schools. And then it also has any critical infrastructure, such as dams, pump stations, communications systems, et cetera. So they're all together. The list actually includes 81 items. And again, they're all mapped. And eventually, you get a chance to see these maps in a lot more detail as well. They will be included in the report and digitally available to the town for GIS. So that's what we've been pulling together at this point, and the next steps will be to pivot and begin to look at the mitigation strategy. What what measures can the town take? We'll begin by looking at your previous plan, which had mitigation recommendations in it from 2012, and figure out are some of those, were some of them not yet implemented but still valid? And the the core team will actually sort of weigh in, yeah, we should actually still include this measure. It's kind of a long-term measure, we still want to include it, or maybe they'll say, no, we actually completed these two or three, and you can take them off the list, et cetera. Identifying mitigation measures, that new ones that, you know, were not in the previous plan, but your experience since then has shown you, oh, there's areas over here that flood that we didn't know about before, or are now more concerned about other categories of hazards than we were in the past. Typically, towns are focusing a little bit more in recent plans than they did in their previous plans on things like the nor'easters, blizzards and power failures and that sort of thing, beyond just flooding. And then also, this MVP workshop will likely yield some suggestions and recommendations that will come out of that that could be fed into this hazard mitigation plan. And so that will be all drawn together into one unified list of of potential actions the town can take. And then the core team will set about to help us set their priorities, again, reflecting some of the discussions you talked about a little bit earlier. You can't just have a long list of measures that you want to take. You need to kind of get an idea of which ones of them need to be done first or earlier or more critical than others, which ones are short term, which ones may be longer term, to the extent we can, put cost estimates or ranges of costs on some of them and potential timelines. So you'll have then, at the end of the day, a roadmap to your future resilience actions the town can take, somewhat organized in a way that can help you prioritize them and get an idea of how you want to implement. So finally, just to recap what the final steps are going to be from this point forward. For the MVP, we will be holding the workshop in late March, and then after that, holding a public listening session open to the whole town. And that will all get written up in a report that MAPC will do that will be submitted to the Environmental Affairs Agency, because they're the granting agency for this. Once they accept that, once the state accepts that, Carlisle will be designated by the state as an MVP community, which unlocks eligibility for MVP action grants for projects that could actually be mitigation, you know, on the ground projects. Secondly, the HMP is a very parallel process. It's just that it's under MEMA and FEMA rather than the Environmental Affairs. We'll hold, we'll get the draft plan together by by this spring and hold a second public meeting and submit the plan to MEMA, who in then turn will submit it to FEMA. Once FEMA is satisfied that the plan has all the content that is in their requirements, they will issue what's called an approval pending adoption, which means they approve the content of the plan. They just want to see the town officially adopted. That will come back to this board for just a simple vote to on a certificate of adoption. And once that is done, you will then be eligible for FEMA mitigation grants. So these are federal grants. And so you can see these two processes lead to opening up potentially two different lines of funding at the state level, the MVP action grants, and at the federal level, the FEMA mitigation grants. So that's the sort of a bit of a gold pot at the end of the rainbow of this process. But we like to think that just going through the planning process has its own intrinsic value in helping you establish your right to your priorities as well. And with that, I think I'm all set for giving an overview, and I should probably stop sharing, although I will will say there's a, there's a bonus for anyone who can tell me what's wrong with this picture.
The sharknado.
Okay, there's two things, there's two things odd about this picture. That's one of them. The lake shark, the puddle shark, and there's one other thing on here that this, if you really look hard, you're going to go, what? Wait a minute.
Oh, the British.
What side of the street are we going, right? Okay, with that, I will, very good. Somebody got that. Somebody usually gets it. I don't know if you have any time for questions, but I'm willing to do that.
I mean, one of the hazards I didn't see listed there, which is the one this town probably has the most issue with, and that's wind.
Yeah, wind is in there, actually.
Isn't okay, because I attended an ever-source hazard program some time ago that estimated in a category two hurricane, we'll lose 80% of our trees. And so the last major disaster we had here was when all of our streets from town were blocked. There was no way to get an ambulance from the center of town to any hospital without, and we had fortunately had volunteers that went out with chainsaws, including our fire chief, who led the fire, led the ambulance out with his own chainsaw to get trees out of the way. But, and I don't know how you mitigate, you know, in a town like this, tree damage, but.
Right. Well, you know, you're right. And, you know, mitigating power failures is something that comes up in every town, but in towns that have a lot more trees like yours, it's a harder and more difficult issue. I mean, we have done plans for other towns that have a lot of forested land. For instance, Dover, Lincoln, we've we've done plans in those towns. When it comes down to it, I think you can do something about the degree of damage you might have in, say, a thunderstorm, a nor'easter. If you get a category two or three hurricane, it's kind of like all bets are off in a way. I mean, you can never prepare for 80%, you know, how do you prepare for 80%? You're you're you quickly shift into emergency response mode there, very quick.
Anybody else have questions? So the, again, reiterating the timeline, so we're expecting this conclusion by the the summertime, is that correct?
Yes, that's right.
Very good.
Jump in, Alan, and just add one thing. Martin didn't mention, but we do have a date for the workshop. It's March 27. That's a Saturday morning. We're estimating around four hours. It's still a preliminary date, but when that's solidified, we'd love to have all of your participation in that, if if you're able to.
Is that predicted to be a Zoom?
Yes.
Yes, it is, unfortunately. Normally, we have held these as live meetings in the past years. And we are, we are adapting it for Zoom, which one of the things about that means it's a little bit shorter than it would have been in person. We make them nearly full day events. We figure a full day on a Zoom is a non-starter. It's bad, you know, and so it'll be roughly about a half day event on a Saturday in the morning.
Who's bringing the virtual donuts? You, Martin?
Bringing all the virtual donuts you can possibly eat.
So, okay, so you have the workshop, and it's whoever shows up, I guess. But Martin, who who's doing the actual work then? You're taking input.
Yes, okay. So the way the workshop is structured is that we would have breakout groups. And so with Zoom, we'll have breakout, you know, even Zoom breakout groups into smaller groups. Usually, if you were in a hall somewhere with like people sitting around round tables that have six or eight people at each table, each of them would go through the discussion with a facility. With a facilitator at each table from our agency. And they're each, but it's more, we find that it's more fruitful. To have these broken into smaller groups rather than like I have a room of thirty people all just as a single discussion book. And then report back to the to the body as a whole. We'll do a parallel of that on Zoom breakout groups. In each one, and then we would take notes and then write up the findings from that.
Right. So I mean, let's just, I'll just role play here. So I'm I live on East Street. I noticed East Street, you know, was identified as a flood zone. So. Let's say that, you know, one of the things mentioned is that. Flooding on East Street is an issue. And then maybe your facilitator or somebody says, well, gee, I'll be quiet. We could. She doesn't like my comment. We could. Put culverts in or something like that. I mean, how is the evaluation of the feasibility? Because it's all volunteers, right? I mean, we're all.
That's right. So first of all, facilitator wouldn't necessarily be suggesting a solution that would come from the other member. Facilitator is a sort of a neutral party when it comes to any contact. They're there to kind of record what happens and just to keep the process moving along. But not like not to say, oh, this is a better solution for you. So. We really want this to be a chance for the folks in the town to be able to discuss among themselves and come up with ideas among themselves. So you're absolutely right. Ideas can get floated at the MVP workshop about potential actions that. You know, would require a lot further follow up if you were to actually implement them. You know, they would require costing and engineering. Obviously, you're not doing that at this scale. This is a, this is more of a participatory event to get people engaged and thinking and to get some initial ideas out there. And some of them might find their way into the hazard mitigation plan if they seem like they. And that's the core team can help pass judgment. Do they want to take some of the things that come out of the MVP? And put them into the hazard mitigation plan. Still, measures that go in there as recommendations for the town to consider will often still likely. If they were to be implemented, require further steps, further planning, further engineering, cost estimates and all of that. But you get them in the plan so that you have a wish list. Of items that, you know, you think as a town will actually solve certain problems along the along the way.
Right. But do the MAPC professionals then? At some point, somebody who actually knows how these things work has to.
No, we do not exert any judgment on these things. That's we are just facilitators when it comes to the MVP. It's supposed to be a community driven process. To to emerge or to float ideas that come out of the community. But one person I know described it, if if you know how things work on the internet as sort of a crowdsourced. A crowd.
Let's let's build on the crowdsourcing. I mean, I'm, you know, as Kate well knows, I'm I'm a big benchmark guy, you know. And so lots of towns, all the towns in the Commonwealth are going through this. And then across the country, I mean, we don't, we're fortunate, you know, Alan mentioned wind, but we don't really. We don't have a lot of stuff going on. We got some winter storms and that, but. Best practice that's larger than Carlisle. How is that? How is that captured? So, you know, we sit around, we say, well, gee, you know, we should have culverts or we should have. We should, you know, instead of having power cables on poles, we should go underground, but. How do you put that in context of what everybody else has really got much more experience about these things is doing? How does that work?
The the best. Approach here is that when ideas are floated in these different sub small discussion groups. Then they get voted on by the whole and in a priority setting process. And so some of the better measures will sort of float to the top is is be. So there is a priority setting process in this workshop. And we end up at the end of the day, not just with a long list, but with a list of what's high, medium and low. And that's really where it comes from. And those that are high are probably ones that are worth. Looking a little further into and potentially maybe eventually, you know, thinking about implement. So that's the that's the process. It's it's there's a there's a in the real world, live person workshops, we used to use a vote by dot. You've probably been to meetings where they do that where everyone and you know, you'll get a measure up there that somebody will put that the crowds will eventually put. Twelve or fifteen different dots to get votes on it and another item may get two two votes.
No, I get I get the crowdsourcing and I'll I'll stop in a minute, but. The gene pool is pretty limited, right? I mean. You know, if you're if you're sample, if your. Sample set is very narrow, which it is Carlilians. It's not as good of a data set as if it's. The broad group of the state or the country that deals with this stuff all the time. We don't. We don't really know. I mean, we'll self sort as volunteers who show up on a Saturday, but that doesn't mean much. Even if twenty or thirty people coalesce around a dot. What does that really mean compared with the Californians or, you know? The North Carolinian, I mean, we, that's what I worry about is that we pat ourselves in the back that you've crowdsourced and. But our data set is suspect.
I would. I could take a stab at it because we've I've been receiving emails where people send in ideas ahead of time. And the idea is that our community members know our town and they know where our vulnerabilities are. I've gotten a lot of comments to the extent, do we have enough fire cisterns? What if there are fires in the woods? The cisterns are by the housing developments? Do we have a water source for the woods? Should we do something about downed trees in the woods if there's an increased risk of forest fire? Do we have an increased risk of Lyme disease here? What about Landings turtles that use this as a habitat? Are they at increased risk because of climate change? And is there anything we can do about that? And then we kind of rank those, which is the one as a community we think is the biggest risk to us. Sorry, Martin.
No, that's exactly right. This is supposed to be a a locally driven with based. Bringing forth local knowledge, and those are great examples right there of bringing forth. It's not a technical study. It's not an engineering. The the good ideas that come out of the highest. Priority ideas would then need to go to that next stage. It's not designed to be part of this process. We're not going to do that between now and June. But but you'll have ready made a pretty good list of items that you could seriously consider. Taking the best of the best of those and say, you know, we ought to look more into that. You know, let's look at this range improvement over here or this forestry management practice over there, whatever the case may be. It's designed to like be a first flush, looking at raising the issues and raising some good ideas from the community.
To 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 ask question about where you are in the process. So you've completed discussing with departments and now you're talking about. Bringing citizens or where are you in the process?
Well, I wouldn't say we've completed, but we've had a lot of good discussions with the department through the core team. The core team will still meet a couple more times. In the in this process, but we've gotten a good start at it and a lot of their good input on some of the specifics that you saw on those examples. Maps of like critical facilities and hazards, et cetera. We'll continue to be meeting with them. When we start to talk about mitigation measures that would be recommended in the plan. And then what the MVP does is it opens up the possibility of a broader group of input into this than just this core team. The core team is is, I don't know, maybe ten or twelve people at at best and. The 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 MVP workshops, they typically have thirty or forty people, something in that range, no exact number. But you that will, the input that comes from that will then be merged together with what the core team and the sort of a local. Staff and local boards and commissions are saying. So you'll kind of get a blend of those two together.
Any other questions?
Yeah, can I just, who's on the core team?
Um.
Can you help me out, Madeline?
It's me, Madeline Blake, Gretchen Kaywood from the Planning Office. And my two stalwarts who've been awesome are Sylvia Willard from Conservation and Linda Fantasia from the Health Department. We have Steve Hinton, who's representing the facilities group, but who's also knowledgeable about open space and drainage and culverts. And we have a couple of volunteers. Rosemary, I'm not going to remember her last name. I apologize. Jack Golis and Navneet Hundal, who's a Conservation Commission member. And to to. There's some town departments that aren't represented on this core committee, but we think that we'll be able to pick up their expertise. They'll definitely be at the top of the invitation list for the workshop on March twenty seventh. And that's where the substantive input will be sought. The core committee is planning, you know, what date are we going to have it? And. We've developed a long list of invitees to the workshop so that we can hopefully target people with knowledge. So if there's departments out there that aren't represented, we're definitely going to hope to get you at the at the workshop.
Yeah, just because, you know, I mean, police and fire are, you know, there are emergency management folks and I mean, they're involved in literally everything. So, yeah, no, I just, they should really be on the list. Yeah, and and the sooner I think you can get their involvement, the better. I mean, literally, Brian, you literally do ninety five percent of. Everything that happens, literally everything that happens in town. So, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, if you're going to be doing mapping and stuff, I think. Some of the resources that we are looking at would be extraordinarily helpful to be looking at.
Actually, Chief, that would be great. It's like, for instance, one of the things I think I was just noticing we don't yet have is an update. On what parts of the town you would say are vulnerable, most vulnerable to wildfire to, you know. So whether grass fire, open fire, it's so that's one thing we typically. And if there are, for instance, incident reports for those types of those types of events over the last few years. That's the kind of documentation that can go in this plan to give you a better, a more specific picture of what you're actually dealing with in those issues. That's just a few examples.
Now, what are sources in the direct? Anyway, there's a lot of things we could we could do. But then the federal government has pretty good maps about wildfire risk. If you if you look at them, we're a bullseye. We're a big red.
It sounds like it sounds like I should maybe be in touch with you directly on some of these specifics. If you wouldn't mind, maybe I'll give you a call and. We can touch base after this sometime.
That would be great.
Good, okay.
You said that these maps will be eventually available for us to look at in GIS.
Yes, they'll be, they'll all be part of the plan. They'll be in the plan and they, but their source is GIS. So if anyone wants to actually look at them in a GIS format. And use them, you know, they could be incorporated through GIS into other maps you have in the town, et cetera. Yes.
That would be great.
Any further? Here we go. Thank you very much. That was very useful. And look forward to March twenty seventh.
It's already in my calendar.
I want to, I meant to say. That I want to compliment you on. You, Martin, using the word plethora. I've heard that word in. I don't know, sixteen years of town service.
You just never know what's going to strike people the right way, huh? Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. Barney, you're on. Transfer station fees, one of our favorite topics.
Yeah. So from the big, broad picture to the very specific. All right. So in your packet. That you got the end of last week is a sort of an overview of the construction and debris. You know, process in town and also the permits, the way we've done it in the past. And a description of do's and don'ts. And then what I I'm sorry, I couldn't get to you sooner, but I did send out late this afternoon. Some numbers that I that I got from Gary. So. I'll just be brief and then if there's more detail you want or explanation of some of the written material, just, you know, let me know. So. This is just dealing with construction and debris. The, you know, the bin behind the. Attendant sheds. That is for construction debris and. What we have been doing for some time now is we have been saying that. If you had a. I'm just going to get the language here. If you had a pickup truck size load. Then you were required to get a permit. To dump that and the a one a one use permit. And it would cost fifty dollars. And then we had a. Category called a large truck size load. For which you would have to pay a hundred and fifty dollars. And what? I'm proposing, you know, in consultation with Gary at the DPW and and Jen has been super helpful. Is that we change that fee structure and we also go to an online system. And so the proposal is that. We would. Have a a new descriptor that would be if you have a half a load of any. It it half a load. Of a pickup truck of any size. Or for instance, if you do a little pull along cart, you know, behind your car. If if you have a half load. Of construction debris, then you would be required to have a permit, get a one time permit to dump that. And that that would cost twenty five dollars. And then if you had a full truckload or full, you know, pull along cart. Then that permit would cost fifty dollars. And the. The second, the page I sent out late this afternoon. I I did some figures based on. What we know about the two thousand nineteen construction and debris permits, because last year. You know, because of COVID, we didn't, people didn't pull permits for a good part of the year. So in two thousand nineteen, under the old fee structure. There were twenty six permits issued at the fifty dollar fee, which was the. Small pickup truck load. And then there were just two issued for the large loads. At a hundred and fifty dollars each. And so the income last year in two thousand nineteen. From those permits was sixteen hundred dollars. And under the new fee structure, which, you know, my numbers here are based on twelve months, but. That won't be the case this year because this is not proposed to go into effect until the March for, I mean, April first. Which is what Gary really wanted to do rather than move too quickly on it. So. But I've I've calculated the difference based on a full twelve month year. So. From the half pickup truck size load. And again, this, you know, we had to estimate because this has not been a category you've had before. And so Gary and I just talked about it and he and he, you know, did it sort of based on his. Experience of who has come through the transfer station with. Small loads in a pickup that they haven't been charged for before. And so we, the the number he chose, which he thought was conservative was forty. So forty permits at twenty five dollars each. And then the full pickup truck size load. What we did is we just took the combination of the twenty six and two from two thousand nineteen. So the total. C and D permits from two thousand nineteen, we combined that. So that's twenty eight. Permits that would be paying the fifty dollar fee. And so that's fourteen hundred dollars. So. The new fee structure over the same, over a same twelve month period would be twenty four hundred dollars. So a small. Increase, eight hundred dollar increase. The bad news is that the C and D. Bin, the disposal of the C and D dumping is very expensive. And so this is an accurate figure from last year, which Gary just. Put together. So we had two hundred and twenty six point sixteen tons of construction and debris. And the average for the year, because we had a price increase mid year was a hundred and two dollars and fifty cents per ton. So the cost of the town is twenty three thousand one hundred and eighty one dollars. Our, one of the things that we hope we can. Do. Under this new fee structure and with. Some more education and also better signage is to. Reduce what goes into the construction and debris bin that is that really isn't supposed to go in there. And also to divert the items that could be reused. So that we either are recycling things like. Metal roofing and and pipes which can go into the metal recycling. Or we are putting, you know, full doors or. Windows that are in decent shape. We're putting them out for people to take. Or we will, we're also looking at having. Designated days periodically over the course of the year where we would have. An organization like Habitat come and set up a truck. And you could give them these materials that they could resell or reuse in some of their products, projects. So that's the overview. I'll I'll stop there. And if people have specific questions. Or if you want me to make a motion first, Alan, I can do that.
Would be preferable. Thank you.
Yeah, okay. So. I move that the select board approve. A new fee structure for construction. For construction and debris permits effective, uh, April first, twenty-twenty-one. Wherein a half a pickup truck size load. Would require a permit of twenty-five dollars and a full pickup truck size load or more. Um, well, it's not really a more, a full pickup truck size load would, uh, require a permit of fifty dollars.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Thank you. Discussion.
Wow, what a bargain.
Yeah, I mean, if I look, you know, when I, when I look at the numbers and the tonnage.
Yeah.
Uh, doesn't compute at all.
Yeah, I mean, you know, tha- that's the thing about this, um, is I've l- learned more about it. We are. Uh, virtually the only town, uh, we're, we're in the center of all the towns that, uh, touched. That border Carlisle, none of them have construction and debris, allow construction and debris.
And where do those people take their?
They, they hire, you know, they have a hauler, um, that. That they paid have come take it away.
Use a dumpster, yeah.
Yeah.
I, I'm looking. Go ahead.
All right, well, I'm just going to say the, um, you know, in some ways I feel like we're doing this a little bit too, you know, piecemeal. Um, because what we really need to look at is the, you know, we need to look at the transfer station as a whole and what. What we're, what, what things cost us to get, you know, what it costs the town to get rid of things. Um, and have people in town understand that it's a pretty darn big expense that we are carrying. Um, not just for construction and debris, but for, you know, appliances and televisions and tires. All of that costs us. Um, but I. You, you know, in the, in the long run.
I mean, who are we? That's the thing. Who are we subsidizing? Are we subsidizing builders?
On these, on this construction and debris, um, it's, it's a, a individual resident. Who is having, you know, is doing.
Do we, I mean, is, is that, is that true or builders dumping stuff?
No, builders are not, uh, unless, if a builder has been hired by a resident, uh. That builder is not allowed to, um, you know, dump i- in our C and D bin. Um, if it's a, you know, like, let's say they're building a new home, um, that kind of work or, or they're, um. You know, the, the, the language, I'll just tell you the language in the permit and, and this is. You know, I think we'd probably all agree if we've been in and out of the transfer station, it's not, uh, a place that is, um. Really closely, uh, monitored. Um, and, and that's not, that's no fault of the DPW staff, but they typically have. You know, one person on, on Tuesdays and Thursdays, and they have two people on on Saturdays. You know, the, the towns that do a really good job on their, both their recycling and reducing their costs. Are the towns that have a full-time attendant whose job is actually to. Monitor cars as they come in and where they're requiring them to pay a fee for extra things like TVs and appliances. You know, they have to stop, the, the, the resident has to stop and pay for those things and then. Be sent to the, that particular area to drop it off. So we don't have anything like that set up, uh, at our transfer station. So. Um, but, but the description of what the permit is valid for, it says for disposal. Of waste building materials from small repairs and or remodeling by Carlisle residences, residents. On their residences.
And if we, if we didn't have that bin, would people be putting it in the general waste and. I'm not talking about the guy who needs to roll off dumpster, but I mean. I myself, you know, I, I, I will, I thought I was doing a favor. Like if I have lumber. In my car, when I go to dump my other stuff, I throw it in that bin because I figure it's better. But is it? Is it cheaper or not cheaper than the general waste?
Um, it is more expen- the C and D bin is more expensive to dump than the solid waste.
Yeah, and, and usually they encourage you to throw it in, uh, in, in the regular.
Yeah.
Well, I ask, no, I always ask and then they tell me what, which bin I should put it in. But, you know, I mean, a lot of that stuff is just in the back of my. Station wagon. It's not a load. It's just a few pieces of wood. But.
Yeah.
So, I mean, if we, if we charge, I did the math, right? If we wanted to break even. And you use your forty and, you know, forty half loads and twenty full loads. It would be two hundred and fifty dollars for a half load and five hundred dollars for a full load. So if we charge that, nobody would do it, right? What would they do? Would they throw it in the general waste or would they?
Yeah. Or they'd hire somebody, um, you know.
Yeah, I, I, I think part of it too is, you know, Dave, you asked about contractors and. While they're not out-of-town contractors, they're in-town contractors. I mean, I think we've all been in there.
But I mean, we're subsidizing, I, I don't know. It goes, goes back to the same thing about trades. And look, I don't mind. There's a whole, there's a whole. Current, you know, I was on this, Jim Dar will identify with this, right? When I was on FinCom and, uh, long-running battles, should we even charge anything for the transfer station? Or should we bake it into our property tax and say it's a service we provide residents of the town? And, you know, the point is at thirty dollars now or whatever it is, uh, for transfer sticker fee and even at. Fifty dollars for a pickup truck load. It's nominal, you know, we are effectively allowing our residents to. We're providing our residents with a way to get rid of their trash for no cost. We're not forcing them to get, you know, services, uh, through third parties. And I'm okay with that if we're all squared up on that. But if we're trying to. Put true cost to things, we're not doing a very good job at.
Right.
So we need some direction, like philosophically, where do we sit? Because it really doesn't matter to me if it's twenty-five dollars or fifty dollars, because it's so no- nominal compared to the cost. It almost might as well be zero and just let, you know, just patrol it a little more and don't let. Kind, I don't know, I don't know how you do that. But I'm, all I'm saying is. Whether we charge what we charge now or we change the thing is almost, you know, not material to the larger issue of. Are we providing a service for our town or should we look at these kind of things as, you know, at least break even enter?
As long as it's equitably distributed, it's irrelevant how you do it.
Clearly not, it's clearly not.
Yeah.
Clearly not. I mean, I don't want to, I don't want to be, you know, I'll be accused here. Well, Mary Lynn is a friend of mine, so maybe not, but. You know, somebody within McMansion who does a big reno. And to your point, Luke hires a contractor who brings several pickup loads, is getting a deal. And, you know, some retiree who isn't remodeling is sort of shouldering a piece of that through his or her taxes. That's the, that's the truth.
I thought you were talking about the transfer fee in general, but.
Well, yeah, well, okay, that too. But, uh, let's just say the issue du jour here, right? The transfer, no, I would say, let me say, the, the transfer fee in general. Yes, I suppose it's biased towards large households and households with young children, but in general. It's sort of equitably distributed, right? Everybody pays the fee and everybody dumps their trash. But here you have a bias towards people who are generating a certain kind of construction trash and are not paying their share of the world, clearly not.
Yeah, I'm just surprised at the, at the tonnage. I mean, it's, I mean, when we've had work done on our house and it was, and it was a major renovation. So they brought a dumpster in and loaded the dumpster, because otherwise it was just too much work for the contractor to haul stuff away.
Which is why one should do.
Yeah.
Yeah. And you know, Gary gave me the numbers month by month and they're, you know, they're. They're fairly, you know, with, they're in a pretty, a range of maybe, you know, probably the lowest is thirteen tons. In February and then the highest is up to twenty-six tons in May.
How many, how many dumpsters is, how many tons per dumpster?
I don't know. I don't know that.
Luke, you should know that, like, that should be on the.
I believe, I could be wrong about this. I thought, uh, Gary told me it was like two dumpsters a month. On average.
That's, that's a lot.
Yeah.
Well, it doesn't take much stuff to fill that up, right?
Yeah. There's a lot of things in there. Like, I mean, I watch people putting pallets and things in there.
Yeah, it's a very inefficient fill too, because you have to heave it over the top.
Right.
Yeah.
You know, it's not being packed very much. I mean, look, I don't know, it's that sort of.
But you're, I mean, you're still paying the same amount.
The weight, the weight is the weight.
Yeah.
Oh, no, it's no, it's the volume is the volume and it's full, they roll it off. I don't think weights.
Yeah, but they pay by weight.
It would pay by weight.
Yeah.
Right. Um, I, I mean, I think the question before us is. You know, do we want to hold off on this and take a, do we want to step back and look at, at least this particular service? And. You know, to, to cha- change how we, how we approach it and.
I mean, it, yeah, again, you know, from a process standpoint, you brought up a couple other items. The, 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 uh, swap shed, which is really now the swap yard, let's call it. Which I don't really see, that's another question, why we don't just open the door of the thing, because, you know, everybody uses it the same now. But the fact is, that is effectively another spot to dump, because, you know, most people don't take the crap and. People are leaving their CRTs and all kinds of things that have high disposal costs in the name of being a swap. Nobody's going to take your old terminal, right? So, I mean, that's, that's one area. And, you know, just the broader area, which again, if Jim, if you're actually on the call, I'd like, love to hear your opinion. Of, of where are we with. Town refuse as a service compared with, you know, I mean, as a fee-based service compared with part of your taxes. Like plowing the roads.
You just scared him off. Oh, there he is.
You, you know, David, we really haven't discussed that as a committee. You know, I have my own opinion, but we, we haven't, uh. It, it's an interesting thing for us to talk about, but I, I think when you look at it in the context of the town's overall finances. Uh, we need revenue. And so, you know, if we have, if we're, if we're doing something that's, uh, that's costing money, it's losing money by itself. You know, wh- why not try to make it at least break even?
Yeah.
We, we have so few sources of revenue in the town, costs are constantly going up.
Yep.
Um, you know, but that's something that needs to be discussed, you know.
I, I agree.
Yeah, I, I.
Well, we have a recycling committee who, you know, can give us a recommendation.
Well, you know, just, just think about this for a second. So we've got the C and D debris and we have the. Um, recyclables and then we also have the solid waste and, you know, the recycling committee. Has come before this board a couple of years ago with a, with a really detailed plan for. Uh, going to pay as you throw as a way to reduce that solid waste. Um, and that was, you know, there was not the support on the select board to go forward with that. And instead, you know, we opted to do some things that were more kind of a s- smaller pieces that were, you know. Thought to be more palatable, but maybe the time is right now to step back and look at the whole thing. Um. And, oh, because the other piece is also, you know, what a lot of towns do is they, um. Have a list of items that you can bring to the transfer station, but you are charged. Per, depending on the item. So like tires, which cost us about twenty dollars a piece, if you can believe it, to dispose of. There'd be a charge of that amount to the individual for dropping off tires, um. And you get into, you know, we'd also have to look at the staffing question, um, if you were going to go to, uh. You know, having somebody at the transfer station where you came through and you were able to. Somebody tallies up your extra items and tells you what it costs and then you would give them a credit card or, you know, a debit card or something. And they could do the transaction right there in front of you. Um, that's, that's, there are any number of small towns that do that. Um, but anyway, it might, might be time and maybe this is. You know, maybe we should, uh, charge the household waste recycling committee, maybe with somebody from the energy committee, um, to. Look at the whole picture, uh, and, and what would it look like if we were to, to try to make it, uh, break even?
Claude would love it.
David?
Yeah, I'm.
Oh, I'm, I'm sorry, uh, David Friedman.
Oh, yeah.
He raised his hand.
Can't, we can't hear you, David.
You're, you're muted, David, yeah.
Double muted, probably.
Nope, can't hear you.
Boy, it's kind of nice, isn't it?
Well, he tries to get up, um, I have a house in another town in, uh, Rockport and they charge, um. Let me see, I'm just looking at it, uh, ninety dollars for a transfer station, pay as you, uh, throw car sticker. Seventy-five if you're sixty-five or older. And then they charge you thirty dollars for monitors and televisions, twenty for white goods. Twenty-five for brush, um, for each four cubic yards. Ten dollars for bulky items like bathtubs, chairs, box springs. Us, and five dollars for propane tanks, fire extinguishers and various other things. And, um, it worked, I, I, I think what the, the, the. You know, the sticker pays for the staff, which, who are there, who are, you know, who monitor. And, and, and it's all self, as far as I understand, it is all self-supporting there. And then, of course, you have to buy your bags, you know, as well, there.
Let their pay go as well.
And we're, and we're, we're charging twenty-five dollars and no, no, or, oh, sorry, thirty and, uh. And no bags and no extra fees for monitors and, or any of that stuff. And I think it's time that we, um, enter the twenty-first century here.
Yeah, because the, the total cost of the town is like two hundred and fifty thousand a year, isn't it? I mean, it's significant.
In excess of that, yes, I think, yeah.
Yeah, so I, I, I don't know how often you go to the Rockport one, yeah, because enforcement, I think, is kind of the issue here, right? You know, I mean. You see people dropping stuff and, you know, the, the one guy monitoring Bob or, you know, he's over in another area doing something else. Um, you know, how does Rockport handle it with, like, they, they don't have a gate or anything, right? Do they?
No, they do have, they have a gate that, so they check you, they, they won't let you in if you don't have your, uh, pay as you throw sticker. And then, um, and then if you have coupons, because you have to pre-print your little coupons, if you've got a monitor that you pre-print those. And you show them that you're going to, you know. Do that, then they call somebody, they, they walkie-talkie them. Tell them that this person's got their coupons.
If we do that, it's equivalent of raising taxes by about a hundred and sixty dollars a year per resident, for, for residents.
It, you know, it used to be when you could deduct your taxes, I was all for doing it through taxes. Um, but right now, I would rather charge it by the usage so that people are not paying extra taxes. To subsidize somebody else that might be generating more trash than they are, you know? It's, it's kind of weird, but, uh, you know, I was, I was thinking, you know, when I was in taxes, it was thirty cent dollars, but it isn't like.
But we could use all the same, we could use up the money we generate by hiring an extra person and.
Well, I, I don't think it would use all of it up, to tell you the truth.
I mean, you could just rely on the, uh, you know, law-abiding nature of people and put signage up and say, you can't do this, you can't do that, right?
Yeah, they got signs in Rockport too and they still, you know, people are still doing the wrong things. Anyway.
Uh, sorry, let's, let's deal with the motion we have on the floor.
Yeah, and it's kind of.
Sorry, just, just real quick, David texted me what he wanted to say. Um, he said, we should consider the message we're sending with, with fees that are so low. It suggests the waste is not an issue, which is actually the exact opposite of. The goal here, right?
Yeah, yes, that's.
Yep.
We, I think the conclusion we're coming to.
Well.
I agree, it's a bigger picture item, I think.
Yeah.
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 So why don't I withdraw the motion? Um, unless somebody wants to argue that we shouldn't, uh, but why don't I withdraw the motion and, um. Instead, uh, I, uh. The, the one sort of caveat about having the household waste committee, um, tackle this is. Uh, I'm, I'm not sure. Uh, how active they are. There's, it's four people and, um, you know, I've been, I've been encouraging them to meet, uh. But they, you know, I think that's been hard for them to do. that's been hard for them to do. So.
Barney, I mean, it seemed, they, they seen, is that the Luna Zamaro?
Oh, and it's Rob Perry is the current chair.
But, I mean, I, I, I like their efforts because I think it tries to get people to recycle more, which I believe in, but from this aspect, it's not really that. It's a finance. It's, it's a finance thing as Jim framed it and it's, it's a select board from a sort of philosophical issue. I don't know, again, I don't know how much like data we need. I think it's like, all right, is this, first of all, do we want to reward bad behavior? Like David said, Friedman. And do we believe that it's a service we should provide our town or we should, you know, segregate to Kate's point, we should, you know, take a finer brush to the thing so that people are paying approximately their fair share and other people are not forced to subsidize profligate behavior. I mean, that's a philosophical argument that doesn't need the other committees. It just needs us guys. And then we can design, I mean, the solutions are there, right? Pay as you throw is a, is a well-known.
Right.
Phenomenon that pretty much answers. It's like carbon tax credits, right? I mean, if you, if you fairly cost the cost of disposal and you make some structure that kind of gets at that, you, you begin to bend behavior in a much more effective way, I think, than if you sort of admonish people to, you know? I mean, I used to, uh, my wife always tells me to shut up, but I mean, I used to sort of chastise people at the transfer station when I felt they weren't actually recycling, you know, and I would get answers like, well, it doesn't really matter. It goes all in the same bin or, you know, I mean, I, in, you're not going to convince people, I think, by sort of admonishing them.
Yeah, and what we, what we know across the state, you know, where they have, the, the state has been doing a pretty good job, I'd say, of, um, you know, providing grants, uh, and.
Yeah, we did a crappy job of winning those grants.
Right, and also providing, um, you know, can sort of, uh, what, but support, you know, from, uh, we have a regional person that is supposed to, you know, help us figure out how to do this. But the, the statistics show that the single most effective thing you can do to reduce your solid waste is pay as you throw. It's, it's the number is something like a 40% reduction.
Right. So I mean, that's, that's sort of an obvious.
But I think we ought to, we, we, you know, I, I think this is something that ought to be done by a committee who makes a recommendation to the select board. And so that, so that we have a comprehensive, well-thought-out, justified thing that we can go to the people of the town and say, here's what we're doing, here's why we're doing it, here's what it's gonna cost. Gary has to say, I've got the manpower to support it. And, and all that, and it need, needn't be a major task to do all that. It ought to be something to be done fairly quickly, but it's, but it needs to be.
But, 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 yes, I agree, um, but guidance from us is important.
Our guidance should be, we want, we, 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 what we would like to do is get a, a as much as possible self-supporting transfer policy.
Why don't, why don't we vote that? Let's vote that. I mean, if we vote that, then I'm all for it.
Yep.
Okay, make the motion, David. I'll second it.
I move that the select board adopt a policy that uh, the trance, the transfer station service ought to be as self-sustaining and equitable as reasonably possible. And that we set up a, charge a committee with figuring out how to do that.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? Hearing none? Roll call vote?
Arnold, I.
Uskal, I.
Louis, I.
Modell, I.
Reed, I.
All right. Thank you.
I nominate Dave for that committee?
Well, look, I think there's, you know, there's enough people interested.
Claude, Claude will jump up and down to volunteer, right?
Yeah, well, I'm, I think we should ask Bob Zod, you know, and, um, and Lana.
Absolutely.
And that, and the other three that are currently on the committee.
Yeah, give them, give them an opportunity. We have a committee, existing committee. Give them the opportunity to do it. If they can't do it, we'll log that in.
Yeah, and they've got a lot of good information they've gathered and, uh, that report they provided two years ago is, but a lot of that will have what they need to go forward.
So, um, uh, Barney, then it would be more than just pay as you throw. It would also be the.
Yeah, that was in, that was in their report before, yeah.
Yeah.
It was, I think, a fee structure and, you know, I think they had, um, um, comparable towns and they told us, you know, I think some of them were as high as 325 with pay, uh, you know, on top of the pay as you throw. So we should have like a spectrum and we pick one and one that will work for our town.
Right, cool.
Good. Thank you very much. And, and, uh, Barney, you've withdrawn your motion, is that correct?
I have.
After all that work, sorry Barney, but that's what happens.
That's okay. I've, I've been feeling this way. Anyway, I, I want to just tell you one very cool thing that Groton does, which has a really great system and they, um, they'll, they're very low in terms of the pounds of waste that they're per household per year, but one of the things they did with money from the state, from these credits, is they bought a, I think they called it an aggregator. So all of the glass that people put into the bins there, they take over this aggregator, you know, and it's a, you dump it in and it crushes it up fine enough to basically, you know, what glass is made of, it's made of sand. So it, it produce, it produces sand, but then they put in their DPW shed and so they don't pay any money to buy sand, you know, it's all uh, provided by the town's glass recycling. Very cool.
Whereas they have a very high tire recycling problem now, right? Less than optimal ground glass on the roads.
All right, town meeting.
Yeah. Okay, so we can't have it on March 27th.
And there are a couple of other, you know, I, I mentioned this, the, well, that's in the town administrator's report, but the garden club tour, they wanna, they're asking to use the, uh, town's common for their tour on the 11th and 12th. Saturday is the 12th of June and, uh, I, I think it would, if, if, if we could avoid that date, I think they would very much appreciate it.
I'd like to propose a date of June 5th. That gives us time. Uh, if, if we have bad weather, uh, we can reschedule or maybe move it back a date from that so we can reschedule to the 5th. But, uh, that would then give us plenty of time then to have a town election following it.
Yeah, I like that. And it, you know, it doesn't, as school closes, as I recall, on the 18th. Um, and, um, yeah, it, it, and it's going to be warm enough, hopefully, um, to be, have it outside if we have to.
Yep.
Maybe we, even if we don't have to, we may still opt to do it outside, who knows?
Absolutely, yeah. And, and, and by June 5th, the rate where vaccinations are going, we're gonna have to have it outside.
Yeah. I know, I'm just, yeah.
And that's the, uh, Saturday after Memorial Day.
Yep.
Yeah, I, I think that's a great day. And as we see, and.
Thinking, um, again, sort of a maybe mid-morning.
Yes.
Kind of, yeah. Yeah.
Yeah. I think very similar to what we did in the, in the fall, Maroon, yeah.
That was 10 AM, 10.
Yep.
Yeah.
And send my calendar. I'll be there.
All right.
There or B square.
That's consistent with what Wayne was suggesting in his letter.
Yep.
Which I also forwarded to Jim for FinCom's input and Jim's on the call as well.
Well, that's acceptable to everybody. We will call it consensus and let's, you know, be worth, let's work with a June 5th town meeting date.
Does that work for you, Jim?
Yes, oh yeah, for sure. I mean, we'll be ready whenever you want us to be ready.
Okay.
Okay.
And then, um, what would that mean for the town election then? Is that, that's a prescribed?
It could be the following Tuesday if we need it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's not prescribed. It's just that we, we like to have it after because this way the sitting select.
Right.
Board finishes up and then, uh, elect your new members. Uh, and then if there were anything on the warrant that has to be followed up with a vote, if it's a a borrowing, for instance, or something like that, that has to be on the ballot. You only have to have one ballot instead of two.
Yeah.
After the town meeting, so.
But we can, you know, we can consult with Peggy on what the best date for the, for the election is. Uh, and, uh, but, and, and then we could, they can count back for that for the caucus.
That's right.
Yeah. Okay, good. Thank you. That was quick.
Yeah.
Town administrators' report.
Okay, thank you. Uh, first item in my report, we've scheduled town council for that open meeting law training, uh, for next Wednesday evening, the 17th, at 7:00 PM, uh, via Zoom. And I'll be sending out a notice to, uh, all of board and committee members who want to attend that. Then we're also asking that anyone who has a question in mind already, uh, please, uh, send that uh, either directly to me or to the town hall at CarlisleMA.gov mailbox and we'll send that in advance to council so he can come prepared with, uh, uh, some responses to that. He knows that there's, uh, uh, some interest in, you know, the talking about town, uh, open meeting law in the age of Zoom and also, uh, the increased use of shared drives by committees to create documents, uh, which can be troublesome. I guess from an open meeting law perspective, so uh, we're looking forward to that and we hope that the mosquito can run something, uh, for us this week as well.
Um, I just want to say the master plan steering committee has a meeting that night, um, Barney, I suppose we need to.
Right, yeah.
Let them know about that. Okay. Yeah, I mean, they should be going to this rather than having.
Yeah, so I wonder, we can, uh, wait a minute, I thought we had a meeting this week. We have a meeting tomorrow night, Kate. Or you think, oh, maybe it's the Elements captains.
It's the Elements captains.
Ah, gotcha. Yeah, that can get rescheduled.
Yeah, I'll have to get that rescheduled. Okay. All right, sorry.
Oh, no, no problem. Uh, second item in my report, uh, you'll see the notice from, uh, Department of Revenue regarding, uh, the late filing of our Schedule A report. Well, it hasn't been filed yet, so it's late technically. Uh, and this is a kind of a pro forma letter they send out to uh, cities and towns that haven't filed Schedule A yet, and there are many that are in a similar position to, uh, uh, to Carlisle. Priscilla has talked with our representative, uh, at the Division of Local Services and they're, they're well aware of the year that we've, we have had. Not only with COVID, but the fact that we, you know, we had three treasuries in about a year's time and, uh, prior to that, so, uh, they know that there are extenuating circumstances. Uh, they suggested that the town might want to request an extension. So with your permission, I'll make that request of the Department of Revenue. We've done that in the past and the, the extensions are not difficult to get. It would take a little bit of pressure off of Priscilla, I think, uh.
Yeah.
Who's doing yeoman's work, uh, downstairs, but, uh.
Yeah.
So with your permission, I'll do that and, uh, let you know, uh, when we hear back from.
Do you want a motion?
Uh, I ca, I'll just do, you know, I, the sense of the board is to go ahead and do it, so I don't think we need a vote.
Okay.
We're already late.
Yeah, right.
Nothing to do about that.
No, no, the, the, what we need is for Tim to write a letter asking for an extension.
Yeah, that's, that's in the works. Yeah.
Okay. All right, item number three, uh, we've got a press release going into the mosquito this week for the, uh, the cable stakeholder focus group meetings, if you will, that are scheduled for April, uh, 6th, 7th and 8th. And we're gonna, uh, ask for volunteers, uh, from various, uh, sections of town. The consultant recommends three groups, one of community-based groups, one of educational, uh, folks and one of government, uh, type folks. And the, I think the trouble here is that we've got people that cover all three. Uh, of those, uh, we've got, uh, people in government and education and on numerous volunteer committees as well. So we might narrow that to the two groups or uh, perhaps, uh, one if we can, depending on the number of volunteers, so uh, that'll be the paper this week and I'll, I'll keep you posted on, uh, how that, uh, is going. But again, that's early April, those, uh, uh, focus groups on the cable licensing process. And then finally, um, we have, uh, in the packet, there's a letter from the attorney for Dan Gainesborough, a developer of Woodward Village. And, uh, asking the town to accept, uh, the open space deed, uh, consistent with the special permit, uh, uh, decision, uh, for the residential open space development known as Woodward Village. I suspect that may be why David is on the call and he can certainly tee this one up better than I can. But, uh, D- David, uh, anything you'd like to add to that?
Steve, if you can hear me, can you hear me?
Yes.
I, I went to my third computer. Um, so the version of the open space deed that they sent to you is consistent with the version that I last summer walked through with planning and conscom and, um, town council. Um, so it's in a form that is acceptable um, to them, uh, and it, since it has to be signed off by conscom as well, um, you know, they, they will do that confirmation, um, from a timing standpoint, if the select board wanted to wait till conscom formally signed off on it, you could, you know, sign it at your next meeting, um. And I, you know, I leave that to you, but it, the, I, I read through the version they sent you and it matches the last version that, um, I sort of had walked through all that process.
Well, I think if they sign it, there's no reason to wait for a meeting. We don't, we have to, we have to, this has to be signed in person anyway, so we have to go into town hall to do it.
Okay, yeah, no. So anyway, when it, it's what it should be, um, it establishes, um, the, the I work with town council and the key things in it are is that it allows the town at some future date, if it needed to, to run piping through the um, open space, i- if we ever needed to use the public water supply, which was part of what we put in the CR on the six acres we bought. And it also allows for um, mitigation or road improvement efforts along Maple Street, which was part of also, um, what's in the CR for the six acres. Um, so those, those were the key things that were in it, um. And so it, you know, that I would support you proceeding on it.
Yeah. Thank you, David. Uh, I don't believe, is a vote necessary on this? I don't believe so. We just have to sign it, right?
Right, you just have to.
Okay.
So you could vote to execute it at your next meeting and, and yeah, or come in during that week and sign it.
Yeah, I, I think if Jen just notifies us when it's ready.
Sure.
Then we can go ahead and sign it.
Okay.
But I would prefer to have conscom do it first.
It, 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 it may require you, I mean, at some point, I mean, you might want to check with council. I think the selectmen have to vote to accept it.
Accept it.
Okay.
At some point, when you're signing it, you're sort of, you're setting it up so that they can record it and it, you know, you're not accepting it, I think, formally until they record it. So you're probably okay, but Tim could confirm that with council in terms of process.
Okay, I, I will do that. It sounds like we don't need to do that this evening, so we can do that at the next meeting.
Thank you, Tim.
Okay, thank you. And then we have a request from the Carlisle Garden Club, uh, to the board for the use of the uh, town common in connection with their garden tour on June 11th and 12th of this year. Which you normally.
I have a motion?
I move that the select board grant permission to the Carlisle Garden Club to use the town common in connection with its annual garden tour on Friday, June 11th and Saturday, June 12th of this year.
I have a second.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call vote?
Arnold, I.
Uskal, I.
Louis, I. I, I, I read his lips. Modell said I.
Reed, I.
Thank you. Motion passes unanimously. Okay.
All right, then we've got, uh, scheduled some of the upcoming meetings. We've got the finance committee coming in next time to, uh, report on, on their preliminary meetings with the departments, uh, on the 22 budget. And also, I know that Barney and, and others have asked for some analysis of the town's debt capacity from the finance director that will also, uh, present at that meeting. And, uh, I think that's, uh, we've got town council on the 17th, the open meeting, uh, presentation. I didn't, didn't write that down here, but, uh, and then to be determined, the upcoming agendas. I'm thinking that we'd be looking to, with the June town meeting day, we'd probably be finalizing the warrant sometime in mid-April. That's at least my guess at this point, but that, that day may move a little bit, but we're kind of, we're buying ourselves a little bit more time to publish the notice of the town meeting and the warrant and we might want to think about sending out more information than we usually do since we won't be as under the gun as we normally are in getting the, the warrant booklet published.
I was at the MMA. I was at the MMA thing and they were, one of the workshops was on running town meetings with, you know, virtually or, you know, outdoors and in COVID. And one of the things they were suggesting was a lot more pre meeting open information sessions on, and actually presenting the warrants and having some discussion even with the audience before you go to town meeting to get a lot of the stuff kind of ironed out before you get there. So that's something we might want to consider this time.
That's with the idea
That's a great idea.
That's the, the idea of being too just less in the amount of time you're sitting there together or just more generally good practice?
Both, but mostly, you know.
I think both.
Yeah.
I mean, but really both, because that would be a great thing. I mean, we, we've tried the strategy of extreme weather, right? Extreme heat and managed to keep the meetings kind of short, which was good.
Yeah.
But we ought to, yeah.
But at a certain Yes, and at a certain point, we are going to have to face some of these lengthier questions through town meeting. We can't keep on, you know, kicking the can forever. So, and it's
I think absolutely, I think that's a good idea.
Okay.
And because it's later, we could do it in May. I mean, we could have these, well, yes, I think.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Tim, does it make sense to also, I mean, would we have time for the master plan to also be on that February 23rd agenda?
Oh, yeah, I was, I had penciled them in. I think I hadn't changed it on this report, but I was planning on Jack coming in that night, so.
Okay, great.
Um, I think, Barney, is that going to be enough time for master plan? Because as I understood it last night, planning board asked them to make whatever presentation they're going to make to us to them before they came to us. Is that
Oh, really?
Yeah, that's what I heard.
Okay, is Madeline still on the call? No.
I don't see her, no.
Okay.
So I just want to make sure that that's
We won't finalize that for another week, so let's
All right, I just want to raise that flag.
So who, Tim, do you want to work that through? Do you want me to work that through?
I can, I, I'll get in touch with, Jack is the chair, is that correct?
Yep.
Back roast.
Yeah.
Yeah, maybe with Madeline, yeah. Cause I had, Matt, I had talked to Madeline about that when we were with this potential date in mind for the master plan to come present to the select board, that I thought it would be a really good thing if members of the planning board could be there as well. And she said, well, she would definitely be, make sure she was there. So anyway, but that would be great, Tim, if you check that.
I think it's a courtesy, right? It's, it's their committee, so I agree.
Right.
Yeah.
Right. And listen, I, I wanted to go back, if you guys don't mind, you know, we, we didn't really look at the list of potential warrant articles when we did the town meeting discussion. And I just wonder if we could take a quick look at that to see if there's anything missing or that we know is not going to happen. So it's
I mean, is it premature for that?
Yeah, do we need to do that tonight?
Well, I, I just, well, it's, I figured it was in here for a reason, but maybe not. What was
My, my thought was that it, I've done this the past few years for informational purposes, really. These are the articles that have come up in the budget discussions with FinCom and others and there are a certain number of articles that we know are going to have on the warrant anyway. And then there's like nine or 10 or so, you know, potential articles. So I just keep the running total. So the board is not surprised by where did that come from or, you know, something that's has been mentioned and not, you know, just more or less to keep track of things. Like
Yeah.
For instance, I got the bow hunting on there. I don't know if, if that could be a ballot question or that, or that could be a resolution voted at the town meeting. Would be up to the board to decide that, but I just didn't want to lose track of what we had said we would have on the next warrant.
Well, yeah, I mean, Timmy we should refer to Wayne's note, right?
Yeah.
While the town, I quote here, not while the town need not be quite as conservative in trimming the warrant as last year, I would still urge prudence in selecting articles for inclusion in the warrant.
Yes.
Right. And, and some of these, the FinCom may not recommend anything with the financial price tag and it was more to keep a running list so that we didn't miss anything. I suspect it will grow longer the closer we get to closing the warrant. You, you certainly don't need to make any decisions tonight on what's in and what's out.
Now, one, one thing that I would like to ask though is, you know, I'm on the Highland Committee, short stretch. And, and the question did come up, you know, do we really want to try to have something together for this town meeting? And I said, you know, I get the consensus of the board. Yeah, I, I'd see Kate shaking her head.
I thought, I thought if this wasn't, this Highland Committee was not necessarily for going to town meeting with it. It was to come to us to tell us what they thought the best use of the building was so that
Yeah, but I, I, well, I guess, I, I guess maybe I'll phrase it differently. Yeah, I, I thought the deadline that we had set for them was town meeting.
Yes, that was the deadline.
Yeah. So, you know, do we want to stick with that or you know, is that, is that in a sense a bit arbitrary now?
I mean,
you know, it's been going on and on and on.
Well, yeah, no, no, I, I don't disagree. I, you know, it's just, I just want to bring direction back to, to the committee, right? Because there, I mean, you know, folks basically know the ideas that are floating out there and then it's you know.
Yeah, maybe everything costs money, right? So I think and Jim's off the call now, but Jim Dar has been particularly eloquent in articulating the idea that the, the financial impact of the COVID pandemic will extend roughly a year or two years beyond the actual pandemic. So we're still not through that. And I think, you know, to me, a guiding principle is to we just, let's do what we need to do, but not do what we don't need to do. And I don't see a compelling argument to unless the building's absolutely falling apart and we have to make a decision, I
Doesn't say we have to make a decision. What we were asking for is a recommendation from the Highland Committee.
But if we don't have to make a decision, do we have to push?
Well, if, does that mean they're not going to meet for another six months then?
No, well, see, that's the thing, you know, I, I think the goal is, you know, the, it's actually, it's a, it's a very good committee. And, you know, there's a good amount, sorry, I should do this at the liaison report. I didn't, I didn't necessarily
Well, we're up to that anyway, so go ahead.
And, you know, so I, I think the general idea though is everybody wants the building to be self-sufficient, right? And, and, you know, we want to determine if we can actually make that viable or not. And then there's, then there's the other piece too, you know, it's going to cost a few hundred thousand dollars to just demo it and and grade the area and do everything there, right? So we need to get those costs as well. But, you know, with a couple of ideas that have been floated out there for self-sufficiency, you know, we really want to be able to determine if it's, if it's a true, you know, if it could truly be self-sufficient or if it's just, you know, numbers in people's heads that, oh yeah, we could make the numbers work, but then you actually look at it and you go, no, it really doesn't make sense. Cause you know, like one of the things is Brian had proposed is the housing. You know, if we don't manage that, we get a management company, right? So, so there's just, there's more little caveats that that the committee just would want to explore. And, and I, I don't think it would drop off the, off the table and just give us a bit of breathing room. So.
This is, this is the first week of February.
Yeah.
Town meetings in June.
No, I know, so
Can't be accomplished in four months?
No, it should be able to. Yeah, we should be able to. You know, it's just, it, it, you know, we were trying to get the determination as to whether or not it was something that was going to necessarily go to town meeting or be evaluated as a whole with other projects and buildings.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's unlikely capital expenditure of that magnitude will be on the town meeting ballot this year. But it's, but it would be nice, I mean, I, I guess my concern is they say, okay, nope, we don't need it till next town meeting.
Yeah, no, no, no.
Then nothing will happen till next town meeting.
Right, well, that's just it, right? You kick in too far down the road, yeah. But, okay, so I'll go back with the message, you know, let's aim for this town meeting, you know, it, it's not necessarily likely to be a capital expenditure, spend expenditure at this meeting, but you know, we need to be able to incorporate it into all the other planning, so.
Yeah. And I think we should know how much it costs us to do nothing as well. How much it would cost us to demolish it? How much it costs us to do nothing? And how much it would cost us to make it into a viable, self-sustaining building?
And, and there is the possibility, right? We haven't ruled this out, that we might have a special town meeting in the fall.
Yep. With all, with all the extra money we'll get in during this.
Come pay as you throw.
Right. Yeah.
Other, other liaison reports.
God, well, go ahead.
Go ahead, Kate. School committee, sort of broadly speaking, school budget. Been having some meetings with the administration and the schools on a request and Scott Triola was part of that from finance committee. He's liaison. And so what we're advocating, I think, is for FinCom to sharpen its guidance for the school since that's such a big ticket item. To make sure that the school budget setting process is more or less inside the swim lane of what's feasible. I mean, my concern, it's kind of like what I've been saying here tonight is people get too far off track and then, you know, they have to get reined in, right? So Scott and I were more or less saying the same thing to them, which is, look, if you total up the clear drivers that you can't do anything about, you know, contractual increases, the fact that there's not pre-pays this year, COVID things that are unfunded, blah, blah, blah. We get to about, well, Scott's math is about, say, I think he said 5.8%, something like that. So that's kind of the floor, like, okay, that's a justifiable thing that's explainable. And as we've talked about in the past, it really, you know, it comes on the heels of a zero, so you have to kind of smooth it over two years. Everything above that is really what they should focus on and be very clear why they're justifying it. And by, and just as a reminder, they, they've notionally come in with a seven and a half percent increase. So, you know, that one and a half, two percent difference is really the important math because that's kind of, you know, where people have to understand what the trades are. So, so they've taken that advice and, and they're, they're off charging off. And it'll be, you know, the next two or three weeks, that'll be a little more clarity. You know, but I focus on that because it's the single biggest line item in our budget. And we, and the second single biggest line item, I think, is the, the share of the region. And as we know that we have fortunate math in terms of the assessment, so that helps us. But we really have very little control over ultimately what the region proposes, right? They'll propose and we'll accept. So you know, those are two very large items that, that need to be kind of framed out. And, you know, I'm confident that, that people who are very knowledgeable in how to do the budgeting and so forth are, are running that process. So that's where that's at.
I have just a very quick thing from the trustees, the Gleason Library trustees, for which I'm the liaison. You know, they've been asking for quite a while about maternity leave and it, it, you know, raised, they've asked me about the personnel committee. And so, Tim, maybe this is one where you can weigh in on where you think we're headed, but I know we've talked in the past about trying to sort of rebuild or re-energize that group. And we've given you the authority now to, you know, act as the, to make decisions in their absence, but we haven't really mapped out a long-term strategy for how we're dealing with the personnel board. And I'm just putting it on our agenda, I guess, for us to or maybe that's something, Tim, you want to, want to come back with a proposal, but I do think it's a reasonable request and, and I think we should figure out how that, make that personnel board work more effectively.
Yeah, I'm, I'm happy to come back with a proposal. We do have the, the proposed bylaw change that, that'll go forward at town meeting. That will kind of change the nature of the personnel board. There'll be more advisory to the personnel administrator than, rather than the way it is currently. The trustees did send a letter to me the other day, which I shared with Alan, and we had talked about inviting them into a future meeting to discuss their request again. They, you recall, they came months ago and made the request. And in the meantime, Labor Council advised us against it because he wasn't aware of any, any other communities that had adopted it and why take the additional cost on? Additionally, I asked peer communities if they had adopted it. No one had. They asked the Department of Revenue that administers the program. They couldn't give me a list of anyone that had adopted it either, which made me believe maybe nobody had. The trustees themselves haven't found anyone that has adopted it. So now they're asking Carlisle to kind of take the lead and adopt, be the first to adopt it. So you know, in, in the interest of transparency, we should have them back in and have that conversation with them because we said we would study it. And when we started to study it, we couldn't find any examples of anyone doing it. That's, you know, it, it, it's, it's a nice benefit. It comes with a cost. We do have, you know, sick and vacation time and personal time and unpaid family leave that people can take advantage of, but
And we also have some, a big bargaining unit next door to the library that would cost us hugely and one which tends to get pregnant often. So, yeah.
Yeah, but, but, you know, in fairness, they, they did ask, ask us to look into it and we haven't responded to them, so we probably should have that conversation with them.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, and I, and I kind of made a unilateral decision that we it is they are an important component of the community and we should listen to their request in person.
Well, I, I agree.
Good.
I'm not agreeing with that.
Good, all right.
And just back on the personnel board. So, Tim, are you comfortable operating with the authority that we gave you? If the personnel board is not able to get a quorum or meet to, to, for instance, some of these you know, some of the departmental requests that involve increases in hours or staff changes might require the personnel board to review them. So are you thinking between now and the warrant article that we'll just continue the way we are?
I, I think so. They, they were unable, unable to meet in December, so I did take three or four different personnel actions that they, they were unable to take. They've been trying to put a meeting together since then. If, if they can't, then I think I'll follow the same pattern that you've authorized me to act in their stead when they, they can't get a quorum together, that I can make the decision as personnel administrator. So I think until we change the bylaw, I think that's probably the way we'll need to approach it.
I guess I have a question also. Have we authorized, or have we recommended that any of these requests for extra hours be reviewed by the personnel board yet? Because as I recall, when Nathan was still on the board, we had some sort of like the policy, that whole policy discussion and, and the, you know, and the idea was people would come to us, ask for hours. And if we wanted to, if we thought it was a good idea, we then sent it to the personnel board. Who then. Made some sort of determination and then we decided whether after that we would send it on to FinCom and I don't recall. We recommend recommending any of these to go to Personnel Board at this.
Well, the only, the only one, uh, I would say, uh, the, the Council on Aging Reorganization Plan, they have heard that and they did recommend that favorably and.
Yeah.
Joan did bring that to you first, so that.
Yes, right, no, that one I remember. I'm thinking about the latest ones, and I think the only ones that we were at all favorable was the, the nurse. Public health nurse. So they could look at that, but.
Right. Well, they did, they did, they did that last year and they did approve it and, and it wasn't funded, so. They can take kind of a, a, another look at it and just, you know, reconfirm their support for it.
Okay.
Okay.
The uh. The only liaison I have for the uh. Council on Aging is that Council on Aging is directly working with the Board of Health. To do the scheduling of the uh, seniors for vaccines. Uh, they've identified by name those who will be initially uh, registered to go in. They, they will do the registrations, they'll call each. Person individually or either by phone or email. And uh, because we're going to have so few, uh, we have four hundred and fifty approximately people over the age of seventy-five. We think we may get something like eighty or ninety, or something under a hundred vaccines in the first week, so it may take us a, a month to even get through the over seventy-fives. So uh, to, to avoid a run on phone, uh, they, they're going to take the lead and they've already set up the process for doing that to, to. Make, make the registrations and the appointments for each individual and then inform them when that is. By age, starting at the oldest.
This is Woodward, probably the first one on the list, I guess.
Could be, yeah.
Oh, sorry.
No, go ahead.
No, no, is COA working with folks to, um, you know, if they wanted to try to get dosed prior to. Uh, Carlisle having vaccine, you know, working with folks to say, get dosed, you'll set up appointments to get dosed at Gillette or Fenway or.
I don't think they're doing those for them, no. They're, they're saying if you can, if you can do that, by, by all means do it. If you can get vaccinated somewhere else earlier. Then go do it, but they're not taking the lead on actually doing that for them. I'm sure they, I'm sure they would help if they're unable to, but.
Right, well, that, that's my only concern is that, you know, like even my folks, for example, they're not, they're somewhat computer savvy.
Well, there's now a, a call-in system that the state put in place, so.
Yeah, yeah. Okay.
All right, so I attended the uh, Planning Board meeting last night and there were several interesting things, um. But uh, I thought the most interesting thing was a proposal to set up bicycle routes. Um, you know, in the old days, they had like Route sixty-two, they, they were routes that went from point A to point B to point, you know, from town center to town center. Uh, the idea of bicycle routes would be. Um, routes that would be easily biked, if you wanted to go from, you know. One place to another, um, so it would probably um, not be a very low-cost sort of thing if we were, you know. In fact, they, what they were doing was they were saying, well, who do we talk to? Do we talk to you, Planning Board? And, you know, and I said, well, maybe you ought to talk to, you know, Complete Streets and, and the Traffic Safety Committee uh, about this. But it seemed like an interesting idea and basically nothing would happen. Until, for instance, a, a road were to be repaved, they might ask for it to be paved just a little bit wider and then stripe it differently or something like that. And then they would have signs, you know, like Route. To, you know, to go to this way, and they would be looking for quiet roads and roads that didn't have a whole lot of hills. Uh, and they would. Pat, for instance, it would also be like a route to connect to the Bruce Freeman Trail, so that once, you know. People would know how to get to Bruce Freeman Trail on their bikes instead of having to drive their bike to the trail.
They considered simply publishing a brochure? Like, like the trails map? To do that, to accomplish the same goal?
It might be, this was, they want to do this through a number of different towns. This was actually started, it, it's a consortium of towns want to have it. So.
Well, still could be a brochure.
Yeah, it still could be, but this way at least you get on your bike and you, you know, you can. You know. Go. Anyway, so that was one of the interesting things I picked up there. The other thing is the develop, they did apparently sell the Valentine Farm. And they are starting to develop it and they're looking for their, their driveways and uh. That's, that's that.
All right.
And I, I will say, I thought the, I listened in too and the um. Proposal from Landvest about the development, I think is being done very um, sensitively, you know, in terms of keeping the. The um. Vistas and, I mean, not, not to.
That was actually done by the Valentines.
The way, I know, I know, but I'm just saying they could have chosen not to do the shared driveways, um.
Yeah, okay.
Anyway, they're doing some common driveways and, and uh. It'll, I mean, you're right, absolutely, the thing should go to the Valentines for how carefully they did the conservation restrictions and set up the building envelopes.
Well, they did, but then they didn't also, there, there wasn't the SROC um, at the time, so um, had not done that, maybe we could have. Uh, if they had not done it the way they did it, we could have maybe clustered it and had even more open space, so. That's part of the thing that the, the Master Plan would like to look at.
Yeah, yeah.
So, sorry.
And the other liaison reports?
MFC, uh, we, we, I. I think we're having the, the um, the trailers coming soon, but I can't remember now. It's coming this week or next week.
This is DPW trailer?
DPW trailer. Yes, and then, and we put two here, we led a contract for two heaters in the inside, so that they, in the workshops and the DPW.
Okay. Thank you very much, uh. And I would uh. Note the receipt of the uh. Signed warrants, uh, thank you, Barney. And uh, one payroll warrant for seven hundred and seventeen thousand, three hundred and eighty dollars, ninety-six cents. Town expense warrant fifty-one, twenty-one for nine hundred and sixty thousand, two hundred and thirty-eight dollars and twelve cents. And the school expense warrant of uh, number five, two, two, one of ninety thousand, four hundred and twenty-seven dollars and sixty-five cents. Uh, no action required on that. The minutes of the January twelfth meeting. Any? First of all, I'll accept a motion to accept.
Move, we accept the, so the January twelfth meeting.
And a second? Thank you. Any additions or corrections? Hearing done?
Question for Jen. Up, up, up.
Go ahead.
I have a question for Jen, um. I mean, minutes are, you know, the name minutes means it's sort of a time-based uh. Record of the meeting. And in the last one, we had a joint meeting with FinCom, I don't think Board of Health was joined, but. Should it be noted that at the time at which we entered joint meeting and when we departed joint meeting or? It's a convention thing, I don't mean it as a criticism, it doesn't have to be amended this time, but what's our position on how we record those things?
I'm not sure, Jen necessarily attends the meeting, she gets the, from the recordings and I'm not sure they're time-marked.
Yeah, I mean, I, do we, I mean, these things are played. I don't know, I mean, it's probably not important, right? Because people are not flipping through the recording to find the meeting.
Yeah, I, um. Actually, what we could be, what we could do, what we could try to do um, at our next joint meeting um, is verbally say, it is now. Um, such a, such a time and we're being joined by this. Group and then when they leave, say it's now such a time and we're being.
That's a good suggestion.
Yeah, I think in terms of true joint meetings is probably good practice, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, mind you, their minutes ought to reflect what time they came and went to.
Yeah. Good suggestion, David, thank you.
They self, they self-scrib, though, they're a poor committee, they, at least when I was on it, you know, it.
Yeah, Lim.
They self-scrib.
They did self-scribe, yes.
They can't afford an employee like us, we're like.
Yes.
Anyway, I have no, no further comments.
Hearing no additions or corrections, uh, roll call vote.
Arnold, I.
Usco, I.
Louis, I.
More ally.
We die.
Thank you very much, they're unanimously accepted. I would accept a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
I've heard of moving a second, roll call vote.
Arnold, I.
Usco, I.
Louis, I.
Odell says I.
Thank you very much, we're not that, we're not that bad tonight, ten minutes long.
Yeah, that was great, well done.